Good evening. The meeting of the Monroe Township Board of Education will come to order. Please stand as our student board member. Leads us in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, Mr. Gorski?
Certainly. Mrs. Arminio.
Here.
Mrs. DeMeo.
Here.
Mrs. Kolpanowicz.
Here.
Mrs. Lang.
Mr. Masters.
Here.
Mr. Pelori.
Here.
Mr. Ryback.
Here.
Mrs. Siegel.
Here.
Mr. Tofano.
Here.
And Mr. Retske.
Here.
Madam Board President, you have a quorum present this evening?
Thank you.
In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted October 11th, 2019 at all schools, the Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the Municipality.
Thank you. Before we go to the approval of the minutes, if everybody of the board members noticed that Mrs. Lang will not be here, is not here this evening, and she asked me to let the board members know why. She is in Washington DC for the next three days along with her daughter, who, her daughter, who was selected and received a scholarship to be an advocate for the American Heart Association's You're the Cure on the Hill event. There's a lot of activities going on in Washington for the next three days, and her daughter will be attending trainings, networking with other advocates and survivors, and meeting with legislators on Capitol Hill to talk about heart disease and the vaping epidemic facing our nation's youth. So she will be talking to our legislators and other legislators, and congratulations her on her daughter for this really wonderful, unique opportunity. So, at this time, we'll go to the approval of the minutes for the Public Board of Education Meeting of September 4th, 2019. I need a motion and a second. Mr. Ryback and Mr. Tofano? Okay? Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Then we, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain or recuse? Mr. Masters is abstaining.
I'm gonna abstain as well.
Miss, Miss, Miss Arminio is abstaining.
Copy.
Okay, the approval of the minutes for the Special Public Board of Education Meeting of September 24th, 2019. Again, a motion and a second. Mr. Ryback.
Second.
Mr. Tofano. Additions or corrections to the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recuse or abstain? Mr. Masters, I think, I think you need to recuse.
Yes.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, then the close meeting, September 24th, 2019.
Slow move.
Mr. Pelori. Mr. Retske. Comments, questions? Mrs. Arminio?
Yeah, I would like to have the minutes changed, the closed resolution minutes changed. It says, appointment of public official. Why couldn't we be specific? A resolution should have specifically what the public official seat was. We had a vacant seat on the Board of Education. I don't see why we could not have been specific about that. And going into closed session for the discussion of the candidate is fine, but I object to the fact that you just have public official. In the future, the public won't know, since this is an official record, the public won't know exactly what public official we were talking about. So I'd like the language to be changed to open seat for Board of Education. What would be wrong with that?
Okay, so noted. Mr. Gorski?
I have no objection. It's a little more detail, but there's no problem with that.
Okay. Thank you.
If the board wishes, I'll reflect that in the final minutes. Adopted?
Please do.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain or recuse? Recuse, Mr. Masters. Okay, so today we will now go to number six, and student board members report. Before we go to the reports, I'd like to introduce Kaylee Craver, and she is our new junior Board of Education member, and we welcome you to the Board of Education and hope your experience is gonna be a good one. Welcome. You have a good, you have a good mentor in, you'll be following you, an excellent mentor.
Thank you.
So we will go to our student board members' reports.
Thank you. There's a new student election process where it is more fair for students running for office. There are four requirements, their experience, recommendations, and interview and writing sample that need to be sufficient enough to make it to the process of student voting. This allows for those who are running for office to have a fair shot and not just let popularity be the deciding factor. MTHS Club Rush was held on Friday, October 4th, for high school students to be introduced to new clubs they can take part in during the school year. Trifolds, boards, and booths where student run. The MTHS marching band is hosting their home competition this Saturday, the 19th, starting at 5:30 with our band performing at 8:30. Ten other marching bands are coming to perform, including John P. Stevens, East Brunswick, and Piscataway. Barclaybrook, Mill Lake, and Oak Tree will be holding their annual Halloween parade in the morning of October 31st at the high school football field with PTO-sponsored trick-or-treat.
And Mill Lake held fire prevention days on October 15th and 16th. Representatives from the local fire department met with every class and talked about various fire safety programs. And Woodland is holding theirs tomorrow and Friday, October 18th. Students also participated in the annual fire safety poster contest associated with the fire prevention days, and the winners were awarded gift certificates and entered in the county contest. Today, the PSAT was administered to sophomores and juniors during the school day. Juniors with distinctive scores got the chance to achieve the National Merit Scholarship. And finally, FBLA's Haunted High School will be held on October 30th from 5:30 to 7:30 on the first floor of the high school. Children can enjoy Halloween-themed activities and games set up by various clubs while trick-or-treating in a safe environment. High school students will also gain experience volunteering at fundraising events. All proceeds will go towards the Mama Mary Breast Cancer Foundation.
Thank you very much. So, we have a few presentations on the agenda this evening. The first one, I will turn the floor over to Mr. Gorski for a special recognition.
Thank you. Would Mr. Washington please join Dr. Alvek and I at the podium? For anybody who doesn't recognize Mr. Reggie Washington, he has been the IT Director for the district when the first computers got rolled into here.
No mic. It's not working out.
So Mr. Washington brought the first computers to this district. He's been here now...
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven and a half years. And as much as a feat that that is, I just wanna talk about a couple things of outstanding performance that I would like to express to the public, so you know what a key district administrator's accomplishments are here. Back in 1999, the first project that I worked on with Mr. Washington was the Y2K threat. And for those who don't know what that is, a simple date change from 1999 to 2000 was the biggest threat of the year, and it was a big concern that it was gonna wreck all of the computers and possibly wreak global havoc. In fact, our in-house design software, our accounting package, did suffer a catastrophic failure because it could not recognize the initial digit of a two, and when you printed general ledger reports and balance sheet reports, it was a mess. And despite all the precautions we took ahead of time, this was one of those things you had to walk into and, and experience it and then fix it on the fly. Mr. Washington took us through that problem, and we got through that in about a month's time with no problem. More recently, and more concerning, this past July, the district, despite every precaution of a security nature, was hit with a very sophisticated ransomware attack. It's one that took down major newspapers and large business entities across the country. Many school districts, larger type entities like Monroe, also were victim to this. It was a simple email attachment that got clicked, and it quickly spread through all of our servers and encrypted all of the data contained on the servers so that it was useless unless you paid a ransom, where they may provide you with a key and it may work. Well, under Mr. Reggie Washington's administration, we had backups in the cloud of all of our servers with the exception of one that was new, and Mr. Washington and his staff pulled down all of the backups which were fresh and recent from the cloud, reinstalled them on all of the district computers after, after wiping them out and putting a new software agent on to protect from this even better, and got the district back up on its feet in a matter of months. He spent the entire summer working on this nonstop with his staff and brought us through one of the, what could have been a very catastrophic moment here. Could you imagine losing all of the student data, all of the employee data, all of the payroll data, all of the accounting data, especially after we just tied out everything at the end of the year, which is June 30? But thanks to Reggie and his backups and his, and his very hard work, we got through that without a problem. He's one of the unsung heroes in the district. You don't hear much from him, but he touches every operation that this district enjoys. So I would like a real warm thank you to Reggie, if you could. Dr. Alvek and I are proud to present him with a certificate of excellence presented to Reggie Washington in recognition of your outstanding performance and accomplishment in administering the district's recovery from the criminal ransomware attack during the 1920 school year. Thank you, Reggie. Next, I'd like to bring up Kathy McDonald, our Transportation Director. I mentioned that one server was not backed up, and it was because Kathy, the year before, bought a new computer system for routing, and we invested in a new server. And unfortunately, the server was backing up itself in its own server system. So when it, when it got hit with the virus, it had no cloud backup and it could not be restored. So we went to DEFCON 5 right off the bat in July, and we're very concerned that we would not be able to get our routing software up to par by the opening of school. Keep in mind that the bus passes have to go out about three weeks or a month before the start of school. Mrs. McDonald spent 170 hours of overtime over the summer unpaid, did not take a single vacation day, and worked with her staff to completely restore a computer server, accounting for over 7,000 students and 450 different bus routes. And she put it together in a way that not only earned the county's recognition for the most efficiently-run transportation office in the county, but won the praise of the parents and the students as being one of the best school openings from a transportation standpoint that we've ever had. Under those circumstances, that's extraordinary, and I would like you to please thank Mrs. McDonald for her hard drive.
So in recognition of your outstanding performance and accomplishments by restoring the transportation route server impaired by the criminal ransomware attack, and by developing bus routes, which not only received the State of New Jersey Department of Education highest efficiency rating, but also received the highest degree of student and parent satisfaction for the opening of the 1920 school year.
Thank you.
On behalf of the board, I'd like to thank both Mrs. McDonald and Mr. Washington for the enormous work that you put in this summer, and we don't see you often over here because you're always doing what your, your job is, and we appreciate the work that both of you put into this district to make it as, as great as it is. Thank you. So at this time, we will be going to an MTEA Pride Grant, and I will turn the floor over to Dr. Lehman.
So thank you. First, I'd like to thank the students that have come tonight. The weather is absolutely horrible, and not only do we have our student presenters tonight, but we also have middle school students here representing a civics product, project. So it's phenomenal to see this crowd here tonight and to learn about the process that, you know, our Board of Education and our township goes through. So hopefully you get everything you need. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to us. We can hope, you know, give you answers and kinda fill in the blanks and help you get what you need so you can be successful in your civics class. So for tonight's Classroom Connection presentation, I'd like to introduce Mr. Reinhold. MTEA, and we're very thankful for everything they do with us. They provide us lots of opportunities, and the staff and the students to do things outside the box oftentimes. This is a great example of that. He's gonna, and his students are going to show us virtual reality in the classroom. MTEA, and he'll get into detail, but they use some grant money to provide us with some virtual reality tools, and as you'll see in a few minutes, they go very, very well in our elementary classrooms.
Thank you so much, Dr. Lehman. So, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for giving us an opportunity to show you what we've been doing at Woodland School. It's been absolutely fantastic, and the kids have really been enjoying it. So if you take a look, if, as long as at one point you could see one of the presentations, a video will come up towards the end, so if you can take a look. So why virtual reality? A lot of people associate virtual reality with gaming, and that's not the case. In truth, in our schooling, it could allow us to see the past, it could help us understand the present, and even better, it can give us a vision to the future, whether it's undiscovered space, undiscovered sea life. But what it does is, it actually brings the students to those places and allows them to experience what it's like being there. And one of the most amazing thing is, things are, that it meets the needs of every single learner that's in our classrooms. Students, it gives them a hands-on experience, so they're up, they're around, they're moving around. It's differentiated based on the student needs. So every student, as we know, learns differently. It gives us that opportunity to work with all of our students so they're, it can go to their advantage. And also, it gives you that multi-sensory approach, so they're visioning it, but now let's activate those other senses. What would it be like if we smelt the environment we were there? What would we be listening to? What sounds would come up? And so this really allows the students to dive in and really take part in their learning in more ways than one. And for students who use, we have goggles. For the students that can't use goggles, for whatever reason, vision, sensory, doesn't matter, you don't, you can use just a tablet device, so they'll still get that experience even though they're not using the goggles. Innovation, creation, and enrichment. So not only can the students partake in these VR experiences, the students can create these VR experiences. And in doing that, they can help with transitioning. So if they know, for students in the elementary school who are moving up to the middle school, middle school to high school, it, they can actually create their own experience to see what it would be like walking down the hallway from going fifth grade to sixth grade, seeing what the middle school's like, knowing where their teams are gonna be, knowing where their classes are gonna be. So this is great for students to not only immerse themselves in it, but to be a creator of one. And it also gives the, the abilities to get emotionally into their learning. It, it excites the students. They, it's, it's absolutely amazing to see it. You guys will all witness that. Now, as far as our curriculum, there is literally a connection to every single document that is written in our curriculum, whether it's to ELA, all the way down to health, to art, and on every level from younger kids, from the younger elementary, all the way to high school. We use what's called Google Expeditions. Google Expeditions, there's over, about a, excuse me, there's about a thousand of them, and they're created by Google, approved by Google, which give us so many options. So all we have to do is say, okay, you guys wanna go to the moon today? Let's go. We download it, and in a second, we're there. It's fantastic. So it's literally every content. We wanna go see the architecture from ancient Rome? Okay, let's go. It's absolutely amazing. And so if you could see the screen, we have a short clip of how the kids have been using it, and just how they're enjoying it and their reactions. So now I'd like to call up, we brought six students over from Woodland School tonight. I would like to bring them up so they could share their experiences and how they've been, how they've been seeing virtuality and how it's been helping them.
Hi, my name is Domin- Hi, my name is Dominic Toledo. Using virtual reality in the classroom is a great tool that helps me learn, gives me a visual interpretation of what we are learning. Also, virtual reality shows me things and brings me to places that I otherwise would not, would not be able to personally see or explore.
Hi, my name is Gabrielle Alia. I love having virtual reality in the classroom. It makes learning a lot of fun, and it gets me excited to come to school. Using virtual reality is very easy to do and doesn't take a lot of time to set up. My opinion, I believe all schools should use virtual reality.
My name is Isabella Rabino. Have you ever wondered what it would be like to take a trip to the International Space Station? In science class, we did. Here we were able to see how the astronauts live, eat, sleep, and study space. Virtual reality is awesome.
My name is Joseph Latona. Imagine standing on the forefront of a major battlefield. This year in solstice studies, we'll be learning about the Revolutionary War. Virtual reality will give me a chance to see what being there would feel like. Then I would use my senses to hear the beating of the drums and the marching soldiers.
My name is Molly Reinhardt. Virtual reality in school is amazing. Virtual reality is extremely helpful for people with physical disabilities. Studying and exploring through a virtual reality headset gives people with physical disabilities an opportunity to go beyond their disability with no restrictions.
My name is Robin Stane. Virtual reality in the classroom is so helpful to me. For example, in ELA, I am able to travel to different settings of the books I've read to help me better comprehend the plot and environment of the story. Thank you so much for watching our presentation on virtual reality, and we hope you see how it's making school more educational and fun.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next time, our, our students need to bring those goggle things, so that we can enjoy looking at virtual reality, because we, we, we understand it, but we would like to experience it, so. And I also would like to thank the MTEA for continuing with their Pride Grants this year and letting us showcase our fabulous programs, our staff, and most importantly, all of our students. So thank you for being here. Okay, we will go now to the NJSLA presentation, again with Dr. Lehman.
Thank you. So they're gonna pull up our presentation for us. While they do that, so it's an NJSLA presentation, but there's also gonna be information regarding the DLM testing, as well as the WIDA Access 2.0 testing, and we'll get into that towards the end.
Could you go through the actual wording, please?
Sure. NJSLA is New Jersey Student Learning Assessment.
Okay, the next one's?
The next one is Dynamic Learning Maps.
There you go.
And then the last one is the WIDA Access. That's a English language learner's assessment.
Thank you.
Okay. So here's our NJSLA overview. Traditionally, data presentations are full of numbers, statistics, they get pretty laborious, there's a lot of information. We tried to simplify it a little bit this year. We tried to present the information in a similar format to which parents receive their reports. They each get a individual student score report. So these charts and graphs that you'll see are similar to what they receive as an individual performance report for their student. So that was kind of our approach at simplifying this process. So, as we said before, the NJSLA is the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. In 2019, that would be this previous spring, the NJSLA was, it was its first installment. It's formerly known as the Park Assessment. In the change in name, they also shortened the assessment. So there's one less section of ELA, and the length of time depends on the grade level. And then the math, they also cut off a section as well. So they say in average, it's about 33% less testing time than in previous years. With that in mind, when you eliminate test questions from a test, it also potentially narrows the band at which you're assessing, and also raises the weight in terms of the answers that you're answering correctly or incorrectly. So when we look at cohort scores through multiple years, this is the first year of a new assessment with a different timeline and grading, and we'll have to take a look and see, in future years, we'll have better data to kinda compare through cohorts. Like we talked about, ELA, math, and science, those are the three subject areas. They're required in grades three through 11, but since it was the first year, this past year, the 11th grade assessment was optional. So the only students in Monroe Township that took this assessment in 11th grade were students who have not previously met a graduation requirement. So if you, somewhere along the way through the graduation matrix, have already met your graduation requirement, they did not take the 11th grade assessment. With that said, statewide, the state is not reporting any 11th grade data in any of their district assessment data or their state assessment data. So some students did, in 11th grade, did take the assessment, but they did it just because they hadn't already met some sort of graduation requirement. So you'll see, all the data we're presenting does not include 11th grade data. NJSLA is one of multiple measures that we use when we kinda create a profile on a student. This, as we're talking about this, is five months after the exam was actually administered. We have a plethora of assessments that we give that provide teachers immediate feedback on their students. Those are the ones we use in our daily lesson planning, our discussions about how to implement kind of reinforcement or action plans for students if they're struggling learners, or if we need to take a look and maybe challenge them in a different way. The other assessments, they're listed here as well, but it's the NWA MAP, that's one of our kind of more common assessments. We use the DRA for reading levels, benchmark assessments, teacher classroom-based tests, anecdotal notes, quizzes. Those are things that teachers will use on a daily basis. Again, we're five months outside this assessment, and we're kinda taking a look back at it. Students are in a different grade. This, this information will mostly impact us in our curriculum design, our programmatic planning. So now digging into the NJSLA specifically, there's five different levels. We have Level 4 and Level 5 are what we consider college and career-ready, and that's kind of one of the terms they use, meeting expectations, exceeding expectations, or quote-unquote, passing the assessment. The Level 1, 2, and 3, they're areas that will take a look and see what subgroups or what students, and how can we help them kinda make progress towards Level 4 and Level 5. So our first graph, and I'll kind of explain, because this is a general format for a lot of our data, you ha, you see each of the five levels are there and they're color-coded. The top two colors, which is the red and the blue, those are our Level 4 and our Level 5 students. The numbers in there are the percent of students that either got a 4 or a 5. So if you add together the, the yellow and the blue color, that's who you get in terms of meeting expectations or exceeding expectations. So for example, if you look at Grade 4 on the bottom, you see Grade 4 2017, Grade 4 2018, Grade 4 2019. So for 2019, 50% of our students were at a Level 4, 29% of our students were at a Level 5. You add them together, you're at 79% of our 4th grade students on this new assessment. You add them together, you're at 79% of our 4th grade students on this new assessment were meeting or exceeding expectations. And that's what you would do is you look across the cohort, so 16, 17, and 18. 17, 18, 19, rather. And then this happens to be the ELA cohort. This next slide presents the math cohorts. All this data and the reason, I'm not, I could go through every single bullet point here, this is going to be on the website, so you can dig in. If you have questions, feel free to reach out to me. We can have a conversation about the details of this information. But again, it's statistical, it's laborious if we go through every nitpicky point. One thing you'll see here on the far right, this is a significant note. Grade 8, the Grade 8 students, many of our students take Algebra 1. So this are, it includes only students taking the Grade 8 NJSLA. So the Algebra 1 students are not reflected in this, so this does not reflect the Grade 8 class as a whole. This reflects just the students taking the Grade 8 NJSLA assessment. Those Algebra 1 students will be represented as we go through the grade-by-grade breakdown.
So this is the first year they've had this test, but yet we have three years of-
This is the first year it's renamed to NJSLA. What we're comparing this to is two prior years of PARC. Yep. So this first, the third column in each one of these, that's a shortened version of PARC. Yep. Any of the little caveats, I've highlighted at the bottom. So if we go, when we go through and we dig back in, if you have questions, the notes about the mat, Grade 8 math and Algebra 1 being separate, Grade 11 not being included in the data, they're all little highlights at the bottom. And there is a sense of rounding here too, so if you end up with 101% or 99%, it all has to do with the rounding of the decimals.
Is that a sheer coincidence that for each of the patterns, for each of the grades are pretty consistent over the three years? I'm seeing the both the slides and I see a similar pattern in terms of, yep.
Yep. I think what you see is, these are different students, right? So this is the Grade 3 assessment for three different cohorts of students.
And yet the results are about the same.
Yep. Yep. And I, and I think that speaks to, you know, we have a tremendous teaching staff that regardless of the groups of students and the types of students sitting in front of them, as they change each year, they adapt, they differentiate, and they can get them to achieve, you know, their maximum level. And one thing that we don't present here, but is presented in the parent reports, is a student growth percentile. And that, that compares students to their peers. And this is a achievement kind of presentation. This is the end number, how many people passed the test. What's equally as important is, some students may start at a level that they may never actually get to the passing number, but if they grow, right? That's what we're looking for. And it'll take time, we can get them to get to the standard, the grade level expectations, but they may not be able to do that in one year. So the student growth percentile is something that's reported out on the parent reports, but it's also something considered when we look at data like this.
Dr. Lehman?
Yes.
Just for clarity, so the, the new test is, is shorter-
Yep.
-but the actual skills that are being assessed are basically the same as the prior PARC exams?
There, I mean, you can-
This new test reflects the New Jersey state standards. The PARC reflects the Common Core. So a few years ago, we were required to change all of our curriculum documents-
Right.
-to reflect the new state standards. So there is some difference. Not a lot, when we changed the, the standards, it's not a lot, but there are, yes, you will, there are some differences between the two sets of standards.
Thanks. So a good comparison, and one of our supervisors thought of this, sometimes we, when we totally change a test, we say we're comparing apples to oranges. I would consider this apples to different kinds of apples, right? So they're all, there are still apples, but they're a little bit different. Right? So it's not totally different, but there are some subtle changes, which kind of explains why you see some grade levels maybe spike up a little bit, some grade levels in terms of four, meeting 4 and 5 standards, going down a little bit. And we'll kind of monitor those trends as we go through.
What was the lag time, you said, when you get the results back?
We get the results end of summer usually.
Okay.
Yep. And then they're preliminary, and then they're finalized and we tend to, we, as soon as we can, as soon as we get the finalized reports, we send them out to parents, which usually is the beginning of the school year, a couple weeks into the school.
And then they can be applied to the next year for the curriculum for those students, correct?
Yep. And we dig into, and there are some reports that we have on the backend that we can take a look at every standard, how many questions address each standard, and then how many stu-, and then there's like a line graph that shows students and how many got it right and wrong. And, so we can kind of narrow it down. Sometimes what we do is we see the areas where they may not be getting the highest marks are the areas that we may cover after the assessment. Right? Because the assessment, some of these, that's the other thing keep in mind, some of these assessments are given in March, the other ones in 16 and 17. They've been working in that testing window later and later in the school year. This year, it's mostly the month of May. So we have almost eight weeks of additional instruction relative to when we were giving the test a couple years ago. So, a lot of variables that change, which is another reason why you see, we see some consistent patterns, not a lot of jumping around, but we do see ups and downs year to year. So, in the next series of slides here, I'll explain how this one works and then I basically broke it down by each grade level. So this is Grade 3. Again, we're looking at a similar kind of profile. We have the colors again. Green and yellow is what we're looking at for Level 4 and Level 5. And if you add those two together, then that's basically who is a college and career-ready. This slide breaks it down by school. And then at the bottom, you have the district average and the state average. And we do a very good job here. I mean, the teachers are amazing. Again, you're going to see ebbs and flows if we did this for a year-to-year analysis. You'll see schools flip-flopping back and forth totally. One of the huge variables is the student population, you know, as we move different cohorts around and things. But, you know, the general message here is that we do really well and we're proud to kind of tout that. We always have room for improvement. You'll see, every year we take additional measures, that's one of the last slides here, to just make changes and address areas of weakness. So here we go. We have one and I'm, I'm going to click through a few of these, but this is Grade 4. Similar presentation for Grade 5. Grade 6. Now the district is the same as our middle school, Weave 1 Middle School, so when we present the district information, it's really just the same as our middle school. Again, you can see, middle schoolers are doing really, really well. Again, to keep in mind, this 8th grade assessment here, no Algebra 1 students included in here. That's why you see a lot of the Algebra 1, that's an advanced math class. That's why you see a lot of yellow and not as much green. If we were to have those Algebra 1s take this test, we'd probably see more yellow and more green potentially, so. Here's our high school ELA outcomes. Again, same kind of profile, yellow and green. This information, see, we left out Grade 11. Again, it was an optional assessment. This is where we'll see those middle school students who took Algebra 1. This is where their information will be presented. And now we're also required to report out on subgroup performance. So the next series of slides, again, is breaking it down by subgroup. Males, females, economically disadvantaged, students with disabilities, Hispanic, Asian, white, and black. That's how we, our template to report the information out on. And again, we take this into consideration in curriculum development, intervention in placement. And we do this for each grade level, Grade 4, Grade 3, Grade 4. 5 and 6. Here's 8. Again, the mathematics, no Algebra 1 students included, so that's why you see a difference in the meeting and exceeding expectation percentages. Here's our high school ELA subgroups, 9th and 10th grade. Again, like Mr. Pelori pointed out, there are consistent percentages through this and it's testament to the teachers and the way that they can teach everyone. Algebra 1 students at the middle school are included in this number. So now, this piece of the presentation is on our Dynamic Learning Map. So this is an assessment given to, it's an alternate assessment, it's given to students with significant disabilities. There's a flow chart that child study teams and special education educators will use to determine whether a student qualifies to take this assessment. And because of the low numbers we have, if we were to break this out the way we broke out that previous data, we risk the, we risk identifying students if we start breaking out that fine tune. So the information we're going to present tonight is basically, this is the quantity of students in the district that took these varied assessments. So you notice, not every student takes every assessment in the three different subject areas. So we have 40 students in ELA, 39 students in math, and then 20 of those students actually taken in science as well. And there's criteria and there's, like I said, that matrix that will funnel them into which assessment they take. And these students represent grades 3 through 11. So this is a total, 40 students, students total, grades 3 through 11 in ELA. And that's how we kind of present that. And finally, this is for our English, English language learners, the WEATA Access 2.0. Again, it's a small kind of profile of students. The way we're going to present this information is, students take it yearly. This is results from last spring. Four and a half or higher on this assessment, which is scored on a scale of 1 to 6. The students are exited from the program. Last year, we had nine students exited from the program. Something they take every year. The longer they're in district, we would expect to see them kind of make growth through this assessment. We receive students daily, literally daily. And some of them come and they have no mastery of the English language and we immerse them in their classrooms and we teach them using pictures and labels and some students come with a anywhere in between, a total mastery, you would never think that they were ELL students. And we're excited. This is a, a growing piece of our student population right now. And you'll see, as we go through the budget process and everything, that this is a huge focus for us. And then the last piece, overall, for all these assessments, these are some things we do based on the information we get. So we do ongoing professional development for all of our students, special education, ELL, all subject areas, it's ongoing. We have an RTI process, which is a tiered system of support. It's something that we have in place and we're kind of developing K through 12, specifically in K through 5. We have implemented math basic skills teachers this year. That's not something we've always had in the 4th, 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade realm. We've had reading specialists for a while. We're upping the ante in terms of daytime interventions. So we're putting the time in during the day at a young age to try and catch them up and get them what they need so as they move through middle school and high school, you know, they're back at grade level where they need to be. We have an accelerated math program that addresses the needs of some of our high learners. Tag cluster grouping, that's something we start in Grade 2. And we have classes grades 2 through 5. STEM humanities tagged this year in grades 5 through 8. Differentiate instruction is in every classroom, K to 12. That's something that we kind of cycle back as building administrators. We would, you know, always do refreshers and challenge our teachers to make sure they meet the needs of every student in their classroom. We have honors level courses and AP level courses in the high school. And then, I mentioned this earlier, but we use the MAPGrowth K through 11 this year to track our, our students' progress. It's given two to three times a year and that's something that they give on one day and they have the assessment data the next day. So they can start planning their lessons and planning the units the day after they give the assessment. And that kind of directs them as to where they're ready to learn as opposed to a summit of assessment, like we're talking NJSLA is, show me what you know. This is, we're going to give you a test. The MAPG actually, as you get questions wrong, it makes the questions a little easier, and as you get them right, it makes them a little harder. And it finds what they call the zone of proximal development. And that's where the teachers can then start planning and knowing what they need to teach their students. And that's it.
Are there any questions for Dr. Lehman? Thank you. At this time, we will turn the floor over to Dr. Alvik for the High School Middle States Accreditation update.
So last year, we heard about the high schools and the process that they were going through for accreditation called the Middle States Accreditation Process. So, we are happy to report that we have earned that accreditation. So, Mr. Maggiapola and Ms. Drust are here this evening to share some of the results.
Madam Board President, Dr. Alvik, Dr. Lehman, Mr. Gorski, members of the Board of Education and Monroe Township community. I'm here tonight with Ms. Danielle Drust to present to you the final summary report of the Middle States Association of Colleges and Schools, which grants Monroe Township High School full and unconditional reaccreditation as a member of the Middle States Association of Colleges and Schools. Our reaccreditation process concluded with an onsite visitation and evaluation in March 2019 by a Middle States Visitation Team, which produced a full report that can be viewed on the high school website. At this time, I would like to present to you, Madam Board President, with a hard copy.
Thank you. Thank you.
At this time, I would like to thank Ms. Drust and her team for all the hours of hard work and dedication that culminated in our reaccreditation as a Middle States school following the Excellence by Design model. Excellence by Design is an accreditation protocol that uses strategic planning as a vehicle for growth and improvement in student performance and in the school's capacity to affect that growth. As acting principal of the high school, I'm immensely proud of the staff and students of Monroe Township High School, who so impressed the Middle States team just being who they are and doing what they do. To me, the ultimate compliment and recognition of our great school was when several of visiting team members told me how the staff and students made them feel at home and they wished they could work at Monroe Township High School. This is truly a testament to the hard work and dedication of the staff and incredible student body that makes Monroe Township High School a special place. Finally, I would like to thank the Board of Education for their unwavering support for the staff and students of Monroe Township High School that provides the foundation for our continued journey on the path of excellence. At this time, I introduce to you Ms. Drust, the Middle States Internal Coordinator, who will give you a brief summary of the Middle States report.
Thank you, Mr. Maggiapola. Good evening. They can't hear you. Can't hear me? Sorry. Is that better? Okay. I apologize. At our last board meeting that I met with you guys, we discussed the fact that the visit was forthcoming and we discussed some of the goals and standards that the Middle States team was going to be looking at. So, just to refresh everyone on what that means. So accreditation really is an external measure of our school quality and student achievement. And the main goal is to foster continuous school improvement. So, we undertook a very detailed self-study where we, as the teachers and the staff, as well as students and parents in the community, got to focus on several standards, which I'll show you on the next slide, to guide us towards what we wanted our overarching goals to be for improvement. And then, as Mr. Maggiapola discussed, a group from the Middle States team came out to visit with us. And they then prepared the report based on their findings of the 12 standards. So for each standard, our team prepared a binder with large, copious amounts of evidence to support how our school is not only meeting that standard, but also exceeding it. So, these are the 12 standards that Middle States look at. Governance and school leadership, school improvement planning, finance, facilities, school organization, staff, health and safety, educational programs, assessment, student services, student life and information resources. And I just want to share with you and reiterate some of the things that was told to me was that the- that the site leader, Matt Frank, he said he has not seen a facility this amazing in a very, very long time, and we rival some community colleges on some of the opportunities that we are affording our students. They also were quite impressed with the vast amount of educational programs that we offer for our students. And one program that they were extremely proud of, and we as a school community are as well, is of course our Unified Program, as well as our Avid Program, being flagship programs for the school. So full accreditation, we're very happy to say that, was granted to the high school without any stipulations. So there was really nothing that they said that would hinder us from receiving that accreditation. The accreditation is granted for seven years. In three years, we're going to have to do a mid-report, where we discuss how well we are reaching our three goals. And then, we at the high school are continuing to work on those growth objectives and our plan for success in the future. So I wanted to pull some of the more, I felt, interesting parts of the report. It's a very long report, but they were very, very complimentary. And again, one of the things they discussed was the Avid Program, the Unified, the STEM Academy, Falcon Life, Project Lead the Way. And I felt this very touching, as a teacher in the community, that one of our students stated, "You can be anything and study any subject you want at my high school," which really speaks to the fact that our students enjoy being here, and we are offering them an outstanding program. The next topic that I pulled out from the report was the discussion of, "Does your child feel safe in school?" And again, that is one of our overarching goals. We always want children and parents to feel that they are safe in our learning community. And unanimously, the group of parents and students that they interviewed reported that they felt very, very safe, and they, again, commended us on that. And the final, I felt complimentary piece, was they referred to us as a bedrock public school in the best tradition of American public school experiment. So needless to say, they were extremely impressed, and I would like to say that through this experience, it was really amazing, because we got to show what myself, as an educator in this district for the last eighteen years, knows, that we have some of the best programs and best staff. And for people from outside to be able to finally see what we get to see all the time is truly something amazing, and to be able to highlight all the wonderful things that our students do in this community is also why a program like this is so beneficial, because it is an outside view into what we are already doing. So the district, as they say, is successful, and we will continue to move towards meeting our goals, which were to improve communication, improve SAT scores, as well as looking at the high school as a whole and making those improvements. So I personally would like to just say a couple of thank yous, because this was a tremendous undertaking, and we could not have done it without the staff. The staff put in countless hours during their administrative preps and other times, helping us to be able to fill out the surveys and also being able to compile the evidence that was necessary. I'd also like to thank the administrative team. Their support was crucial for us to be able to be as successful in this program as we were. Ms. Deborah Van Leeu, the secretary at the high school, who we could do nothing without her, so I definitely wanted to make sure to give that special credit. And to the members of the Board of Education, who I greatly appreciated, those that were able to come out to meet with the visitors, and they were very impressed with the fact that we even had Board of Education members coming out to meet with them at all. So overall, this is something that the district should be celebrating, and I just would like to thank everyone for this tremendous accomplishment.
And if I could say one more thing about the report itself. If you go onto the high school website, the whole report is there, and it's not just a book of statistics and checkoff lists and things like that. It's a lot of commentary from the group that gives a real cool insight from outsiders of what they think about us. And there's a lot of comments from students and staff and parents. So you get a real authentic feel for what's going on in the high school from this group's report. So if you get a chance, you know, just take a look at a bit of it, and I think you'll find it quite interesting. Thank you.
Congratulations to the high school, because I know personally, because I've been on the committee for many years ago, when we first looked at accreditation for the high school. But this is a major accomplishment for our high school and for our community, and people in our community of Monroe and in the public right now should be very proud of what we're doing here. So thank you again for all the hard work you put into this.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll go to committee reports. I know there's a lot of reports this evening, so we'll start with Mr. Mayo.
Okay, we had a curriculum report, a curriculum meeting tonight. We had four middle school students attend, who were working on their civics homework. It was very nice to have visitors at the curriculum committee, and I hope they learned something interesting, and thank you for coming. We reviewed four curriculum documents. We reviewed AP Computer Science A. AP Computer Science A is an introductory college-level computer science course. Students cultivate their understanding of coding through analyzing, writing, and testing code as they explore concepts like modularity, variables, and control structures. The new AP Computer Science A framework outlines distinct skills called computational thinking practices, and it focuses on computing skills related to programming in Java. We also reviewed Strength and Conditioning II. Strength and Conditioning II is an elective for high school seniors. It is, the precursor is Strength and Conditioning I, and it builds on those standards. It expands what they have learned from the prior year with a health unit built in. It also has a senior seminar with health topics they choose, and the students will write an exercise program with what they want to accomplish that year. We also reviewed health and PE in physical education in grade six. This is the first year of middle school, and it focuses on team games, individual sports, such as lacrosse, volleyball, basketball, juggling, bowling, and dance. There is also a health part that focuses on bullying, relationships, and decision-making. And the last one that we reviewed was Language Arts IV, which is for seniors. It's co-written by two experienced teachers with substantial Avid training, and it combined two mini-courses into one year-long course with greater reading and writing integration. The units are high-interesting and engaging, utilizing multiple texts and formats. There's a book club unit to begin at the year, where students select their books, and it's teacher-guided. They reflect on what they're learning. The emphasis is on all language domains, reading, writing, speaking, and listening. There's relevant research and presentation of information by the students, and there's a year-long independent reading unit that requires students to self-select books with the goal of developing a habit of reading and building reading stamina. And that is it. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mrs. Siegel.
Hi, I have a report from Mrs. Lang on the Policy Committee. First, we'd like to thank Mr. Chiarella for being an important part of our committee, and wish him well, and to welcome Lou Masters to our very effective and hard-working committee. Just a refresher, for the benefit of Mr. Masters, that it is the role of the Board to set policy. Policy is, in very simple terms, what we as a Board want to see happen. Regulations are the work of the superintendent and administration. The administration determines how the policy will be implemented, as the administration is responsible for handling the everyday operation of the school district. We approved seven documents for reaffirmation. These were identified by Dr. Alvik as priority policies to be reaffirmed as part of the required comprehensive equity plan. Reaffirmation only requires one vote, as there is not a substantive change to the policy. Four documents have been presented for revision and will require two votes. Policy and Regulations 5600 had minor revisions and deletions of unnecessary blank spaces. The Code of Conduct is updated annually by the individual school administrators, and the policy and regulation will now reflect that. 7510 and 9160 have been under review since the spring. The Policy Committee and Administration have been informed of shortcomings within this policy and regulation that resulted in confusion and a disruption of the decision-making process. Working closely with the DEC, the District Education Council, and the Board Attorney, then-acting Superintendent Mr. Goodall revised the list of fundraisers and clarified the approval process. The revised policy and regulations are now ready to be presented to the Board for first reading. An update, Dr. Alvik, the Board Attorney and Administrators from the middle school and the high school, along with the SAC counselor, met for a second time to work on the development of our comprehensive tobacco use policy. This policy will replace outdated smoking policies. It is our intention to have a policy ready for first reading in time for the November board meeting.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Tifano?
First, I'm sorry. At our meeting, we introduced the owners of the Eagle River Day Camp. A property survey drawing dated April 17, 2019, which details the property boundaries and structures, was reviewed by the committee. Committee members asked many probing questions and discussed potential options for the use of the property for the Board of Education. The committee requests that the administration prepare a list of potential uses for the site and an accompanying business plan for the committee for future consideration. Potential use options include expanding the Falcon Care and early childhood enrichment programs, bus parking, and a summer camp on this site. We had a need for a sign over at the Brookside School. The Brookside PTO donated $10,000 for this sign, with the funds identified for replacing the existing digital sign. The shop drawing of proposed sign was viewed by the committee. The cost of the sign will come to $16,406. The committee agreed to authorize the use of $6,405 of board funds towards the project and directed administration to proceed with purchasing. The library renovation over at Oak Tree, administration proposed a stop-gap project at Oak Tree School that would create two general ed classrooms within the library. This project would be similar to what was recently completed at the middle school. The addition of these two classrooms would allow the Board to avoid costly trailers at that site at this time. To develop the project, it will require administration to prepare an educational specific specification for board approval. Engage an architect for design schematics, long-range facility plan, revision, and submission to the New Jersey Department of Education. The committee recommended that the administration proceed to develop this project. At our transportation facility, the UST requires maintenance. Administration provided a photo handout showing the corrosion to manhole access points on the nearly thirty-year-old UST. To maintain regularity compliance, either a major renovation, re-topping, or a complete replacement of the UST is required. Recognizing the lengthy regulatory process involved with such a project, administration highly recommends that we proceed with the engineering development of this project for potential construction during summer 2020. The committee endorsed proceeding in this regard. We renewed a snowplow contract. The administration provided the snowplow contract award rate schedule from when the project was bid 2017, 2018. The contract was renewed for 2018, 2019 at no increase, and the administration is recommending a renewal of 2019, 2020, also at no increase. The committee recommends proceeding in that regard as well. Potential trailers for 2020. As requested by the committee, administration provided a handout which details unhoused students and school capacity for all district schools. The data indicates that we require approximately seventy-seven trailers to house all of the unhoused students. After much discussion and input relayed from high school administration, the committee recommends that the administration proceed with a project of four classroom trailers with no toilet facilities. I wanted to also note that the reason why we said no toilets, because that would cut down costs, and there is an available bathroom close to where the trails would be placed, existing. And because of the age of the children, they'd be able to make that journey back and forth to the bathroom. They would be placed in the Monroe Township High School in the area behind the gymnasium for use during the 2020, 2021 school year. We're right now closing out the Brookside HVAC project. A contract was issued to Unitemp in the amount of $893,920 for a complete upgrade of temperature controls and replacement of boilers and rooftop equipment that was beyond its serviceable life. The project is substantially complete, and all closeout documents, warranties, et cetera, are in place. Administration provided details on one change order in the amount of $5,790 for extra costs incurred to address existing piping and sheet metal issues at the building. The committee authorized issuance of the change order and closeout of the contract. On a project that size, I was informed that one change-out order is really, really something else. Like, that's very rare that only one change order occurs. That's all I have.
Okay, and I should have stated from the beginning that Mr. Tifano is the new Chair of the BG and T Committee, and he has taken the place because of the resignation of Mr. Chiarella, so thank you for filling in for that.
Thank you.
Just a comment to Mr. Tifano, as the Chair of the Building's Grounds of Transportation. Mr. Tifano, as you may recall, there was an email that I sent to Jerry Teague about the roof at Applegard School being sort of displaced because of stormy weather. Just want to emphasize that that's kind of reality that we've got to deal with, that every day, we need to go back and see some of the aging facilities to see what's happening there and be cognizant of them and quickly get to the repairs as quickly as possible. Just want to add that.
Thank you. Jerry, I believe Jerry went out to the site and visited, and I'm sure he'll get back to us on what needs to be done.
Correct. Thank you.
Any other committees?
Finance?
Mr. Gorski?
Good evening. Finance update goes as follows. We started with an audit update for the year just ended, June 30, 2019, and the comprehensive annual financial audit is now at the point where all student activity accounts have been audited, completed, and returned to the building principals. The auditing and testing of expenditures is now ninety percent complete, and payroll is eighty percent complete. The next area of audit addressed will be the district's enterprise funds and management's fiscal representations contained in the financial statements themselves. So that's all going according to schedule and going well. We moved on to the budget update for this upcoming school year, 2020, 2021, and following the budget philosophy discussion we had at the last meeting, that's now been passed down to the principals and directors, so they may be in the preparation of their individual budgets in accordance with said philosophy. As soon as the state of New Jersey releases their budget calendar, administration can then create our district's budget calendar, which we expect to be done by the December Board of Education meeting. Dr. Lehman has scheduled budget defense meetings, and soon administration will be preparing materials required for the county efficiency meetings, which will take place in January. Mr. Gorski then gave us a health Mr. Gorsky then gave us a health benefit update, and I believe this also came up at the last meeting. Unfortunately, the district's health insurance broker, Horizon, has indicated premium increases in the 8% to 10% range for next year's budget. Obviously, this is unacceptable, and Mr. Gorsky will be negotiating with Horizon vehemently, strongly.
Yes.
Vigorously.
Vigorously, thank you. That's a better word. I like that. We moved on to additional revenue considerations, which is clearly an ongoing topic and one that we're opening up and exploring from all angles. So, we did identify, Mr. Gorsky identified all of the impressive additional revenue sources that we're currently enjoying over the last few years, which includes Falcon Care, early childhood education, external grants, and transportation joint ventures, just to name a few. One of the things that's probably next on the list is the forthcoming changes in the building usage policy to bring in additional revenue. And then Mr. Gorsky then challenged all of us as individuals to look for ideas for future alternative revenue sources, and we are inviting members of the community and business leaders to also please present ideas for additional revenue sources, and we will take them into consideration for the district. We will reconvene this discussion at the next meeting and probably several meetings after that. Finally, Mr. Gorsky gave us an update on the sale of 12 buses and vans that are, were no longer of use to us, and good news is, is we sold them through GovDeals.com for a total price tag of $24,897, which then gets added to the miscellaneous income line and can be used for one of many exciting ventures, I'm sure. That concludes my report.
If I may add on to that, the reason we got rid of those vehicles was they were long beyond their useful life, and, and the majority of them have been used for spare parts and cannibalized over the years, so they were shells of vehicles that were formerly in service. So much of, to the point where we couldn't even trade them in. They would have been a detriment to the price of what we were buying new if we traded these vehicles in. So, by, by getting salvage value through GovDeals.com, we did pretty well this year.
What it, what it proves is that what is no longer useful to us could be somebody else's treasure. So, good, good to get paid something to get rid of them.
Any other committees, Mr. Polari?
Yes, Madam President, the members of the board and the public. Given the timeframe and the amount of stuff that being presented, I'll try to give you a very brief overview of what has been discussed at the Educational Advocacy Committee meeting, and this meeting was held yesterday. And first, I want to congratulate Mr. Lou Masters for joining the committee, and hopefully we'll continue to work together and embark on some of the initiatives that we already have undertaken. So, the three items are going to be, where do we stand with suing the, the state in terms of the attorneys that we engaged? The second one is, as we, as you all know, we constantly look for opportunities to get more funding into the district. So, there was an emergency aid grant that was announced by the governor's office back in June or July. So, I wanted, the committee wanted to get a report back from the, from the school district administration. And the last is review of some of the legislative bills that are sitting for approval or support in the state legislation, whether it's at the state senate or at the assembly level. So, the first one, the Weiner Law Group, I'm pleased to report to you that, based on our discussion yesterday, thank you very much, Mr. Gorsky, for getting to them very quickly and getting back to us. There is a timeline we're going to work with, within the three weeks or so. We're going to get a recommendation or at least a preliminary draft recommendation from these folks. They're looking at November 11th, 11th as a possible meeting to get together. And I can tell you again that the district administration has provided reams and reams of paper and data to them, and they're going through that as we speak. And I'm very impressed that within three weeks, they're going to come and talk to us, so looking forward to that very much. The second one is the discussion on the emergency aid grant. As some of you may recall, that back in June timeframe, I believe, some of us actually went and met with the, the Commissioner of Department of Education in Trenton, and there was some discussion held about possibly giving us a special aid. And during that time, we received an email back from them that in 2019, an emergency aid grant has been announced. So, we looked at if the school district is eligible to go after the grant, and we found out that there are certain criteria that our school district unfortunately does not meet. Having said that, I believe there is close to 42 school districts applied for it, and 13 of them received some form of a grant. Anywhere from $25,000 to, I believe, as, as high as $2 million. I think there are a couple of districts that fared very well on that. And those are especially the districts that got their funding cut because of the S2 legislation. Anything you want to add to that, Mr. Gorsky?
Just that the district's criteria to be awarded the grant was you had to not only demonstrate that you're losing money under S2, as you said, but also that your district is in severe fiscal distress.
Financial distress.
So, it was a very difficult threshold to reach. We are not in either of those categories. We are gaining under S2. We are picking up revenues from the district losing, and it's about time. And we are not in fiscal distress by any means.
Right, so that's the, the criteria that we could go after did not meet, and so hence, we did not apply for the grant.
Yes.
And we'll continue to see that.
It, it may not just be a grant. It could be a loan that has to be repaid back to the state at the discretion or the Commissioner of Education.
Okay. So, I believe Dr. Alvik has some good news on that front.
Can I ask a question? Or should I wait until you're finished, Dr. Alvik? Is it the same subject?
This is part of his, his report.
Why didn't you let, let Dr. Alvik finish?
So, right before the meeting this evening, I did receive an email from Dr. Repellet's office. Dr. Repellet is the Commissioner of Education right now, and he is coming to visit our district on December 16. So, we will be putting together a, a morning where he can see some of our programs, and this is the result of the meeting that we had the summer, where we asked him to come and see what we're dealing with in Monroe, so that he can help us with hopefully more funding. But he, I did just receive an email this afternoon that he will be coming to our district on December 16.
That's great news.
Thank you.
Are you finished with your report?
No, I have the third item that I want to go through.
You want to wait until I'm done?
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. The last one is about the Senate and Assembly bills, and I just want to let the fellow board members, as well as the public, know that a lot of state legislators usually put a bill forward, and typically, the numbers are assigned to each of those bills. However, at the end, that particular bill with that particular number may or may not even see it being reviewed or awarded upon in either the state senate or the assembly. Typically, what happens is the, the bill keeps tweaking, getting tweaked constantly. So, one thing that we discussed in the meeting yesterday is that we're not going to go behind a specific bill number, whether to support or not support or to watch. Those are the three things that we looked at. What we decided was that we're going to look at the content, what each bill includes, and make sure that either we send our support or, or at least monitor to make sure that the, what is written in the bill, the sense of it, is something that we want to support or not support or watch. I'm going to give you a couple of examples. One is S3759. It's a bill that eliminates a unit within the administrative law dedicated to the special education cases. So, they're going to put a new unit in there with the judges with expertise in special education. The, the bill appears to offer quickly to address the backlog of some of the cases, but doesn't really do anything in terms of getting additional aid. So, as such, there's not a whole lot that would benefit our district. The second one is S3219 that we looked at. This bill eliminates the use of census-based methodology to calculate the state aid in terms of number of special aid kids. Really, that doesn't do much for us either, but we do want to follow this and see. But definitely, actually using the data that's available is more prudent than using a, a algorithm to come up with the census and coming up with the number of special aid students is, at least to me, is, is not the right way of doing it. So, it's, it's a good bill, but we're going to follow the progress and see that. And the other bill is S3758, where the outer district placement of students for the special needs are going to be reimbursed directly by the state to the special vendors outside any amount that's above and beyond the $55,000. I believe right now it's the $50,000 is the cap. Now, they're raising the cap to 55, and, and after that, the state is going to pay instead of paying the school district, they're going to pay the vendors who are providing those services directly. It really doesn't do much. I don't think we can control it one way or the other. There are also other bills that we're tracking closely, such as the impact fee. Although Monroe may have not acted quickly enough, but we still want to see to it that the impact fees are imposed on some of the developments that come into the township, so we'll follow that actively and closely. And I want to thank Mary Smith for, our Board Attorney, for reviewing those, and I reviewed them myself over the past couple of months. And thank you to Mr. Gorsky for giving us a comprehensive overview of it. And these minutes are going to be posted on the school district pretty soon, so it will be available to everybody. Thank you.
Mr. Arminio, did you have a question?
Yes, please. Going back to your report, Mr. Polari, about the Commissioner and the Department of Education, the emergency aid grant, was that the $30 million from the state that they were putting out? Or was this the, he was going to try to get us a half a million dollars? Which, which subject?
It's definitely not the half a million dollars. I believe it's the $30 million that.
That the, right. Okay, so this, but we're not eligible for any of that money?
As we just said, no, we're not eligible.
Because originally, it was like, the headlines in the newspaper was that the state was granting $50 million, not, of course, to Monroe, but throughout the state, and then it was reduced to $30 million that we might be eligible for. And now you're saying Monroe Township specifically is not eligible because we don't meet criteria that all that money is for.
That's correct. Just to elaborate a bit, the state, in passing the last budget, came up with a late award, and it consisted of two parts. It was this emergency aid for districts who were in extreme fiscal distress as a result of losing state aid and other factors. But the other part was an increase in extraordinary aid. And Monroe did benefit from our application for extraordinary aid, which reimburses the district for students, for special needs schools, and related services over $50,000 per student. So, if my memory serves me correctly, we did get about $60,000 of additional revenue in extraordinary aid this year, but we were not eligible for the emergency aid.
$60,000 overall, not $60,000 for the amount of, for, just $60,000?
No, the grant's over 400 now. It's an increase of $60,000 over last year's amount.
That's what I'm saying. The, the, the net difference is $60,000. That's barely, I mean, so that knocks us out of criteria. That's outrageous.
Neither, the two aren't related. They're, they're two.
You said that it.
They're two separate grants.
It was because we got extraordinary funds, extraordinary aid, that that was partially knocking us out of the criteria?
Maybe I didn't explain it correctly, but there's two separate, two separate grants.
Right.
The first one is emergency aid. That's districts that are in fiscal distress who are losing money under S2. We are the opposite of that. We are not losing money under S2. We have many fiscal challenges, but we are not in fiscal distress, thank God. The other part of it was extraordinary aid, which reimburses districts for special education tuition costs and related services over $50,000 per pupil. The extra money they committed to that program did benefit Monroe with an additional $60,000 of revenue above last year.
Right.
They're both not related to each other.
Okay, so what part of the, so, so the, we're not eligible for the emergency aid grant? That's just because we don't.
We, we don't fit the criteria.
We don't fit the criteria at all. And so, where, $60,000 for our special education, just a flat $60,000 in addition to the last year's $400,000, which again, is barely noticeable in our $130 million budget.
And even, and even more insulting, it, it's a reimbursement to district costs that are far in excess of that. So, although we got reimbursed for $60,000 more than last year, we're far from profiting on this.
We're still below what we're entitled to, essentially, right?
We're far from what we feel we would like to get.
Okay, and so what about that 500 nebulous $500?
Michelle, Michelle, you said 30 million. I just want to correct you on that. The amount that was set aside was actually 20 million when everything was said and done.
Okay, so it went from 50 to 20. Okay. Okay, even worse. But, so what happened to the $500,000 that Dr. Repellet, I want to say is, Repellet, sort of threw out there in the summertime? Is that on the, is that still a possibility?
Correction is, he did not throw out. Actually, that was a request from our district.
Oh.
We felt that at a minimum, given some of the, the constraints we're having with busing some of the, the students at Oak Tree and Applegarth, we felt that at least a half a million would offset it. I believe it's maybe still on the table. I'm not 100% sure, but that's a conversation we intend to have. We did send more emails. That's probably one of the reasons why he's going to show up to the level that we don't want to be annoying. So, hopefully, we'll hear some, something back.
Okay, so right now, there's no indication that that is on its way. Okay.
Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
Dr. Alvik and Dr. Lehman and I are going to give Dr. Repellet a very targeted tour of the district, and we're going to show him our areas of concern, particularly the overcrowding at the middle school, the need for trailers. We're going to give him special tour of Applegarth School and a facility that hasn't really been upgraded since its introduction in the 1930s. And I think we will make a good impression upon him that we need more money than the formularies currently awarding us.
I would just like to point out, again, not to be difficult, but just to say that the assessment that we're not in financial hardship, I think, could be challenged by some of our stakeholders and our taxpayers who are indeed financially challenged. And we also are starting to have a little bit of a shortfall in our surplus. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, I think we are really starting to get to that line where financially we are, you know, we should be concerned. So, I would like to say that we really need to start using that kind of language, that our, that our finances are starting to get strained, and we, we just can't keep going back to the same well, because the only well is our taxpayers. We need to, we need to make it very clear that our, our community is, has a great strain on them. Yes, we want to keep everything right for the students. We had lovely presentations today. Our students are doing well. We want to maintain that. But the stress on the stakeholders is really compounding.
I, I can't overemphasize and overagree with you. You're absolutely right. But I believe this particular aid was invented as a one-timer. And also, what might have happened, I, I'm speculating based on some of the school district that received the aid, is that they probably had their budgets ready, and they thought that they're getting this money from the state, and all of a sudden, for lack of a better word, the rug was pulled underneath their feet, and all of a sudden, they find themselves to be short by $2, $3 million. So, they decided to give some back to some of these districts. But that's my interpretation of what I'm reading here. And this information can also be put along with the, the rest of the advocacy committee so that everybody can read it.
Yes, and you could also argue that if the state had not implemented emergency aid, there would have been more money to go around to the beneficiaries under S2 like Monroe. So, we, with the negotiation of S2 at the end, we did lose a chunk of the monies that we would have gotten to go into the pool for emergency aid.
Mr. Ryback?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to pick up and just on a few things. You know, for years, we've been advocating for taxpayers as far as telling the state that our taxpayers are really stressed out, and it's hard to maintain the quality of education that we have and want to continue with our students. And yet, this costs a lot of money, especially with more students coming in. So, I'm very glad that you're going to give them a hands-on tour and show Mr. Repellet, Dr. Repellet, I should say, you know, the needs of this school. They have, they, they have to be faced with the, the situation at hand with overcrowding and the problem with taxing, because it's just not fair to our taxpayers. I wanted to just bring out one observation, Mr. Polari, about the, that one bill with the, creating the, with the judges. Although it's another layer of government, I know I brought this up at the meeting, it can save money if they really lessen the amount of cases that, that are before them and adjudicate them quickly, because that, because we're spending money until these cases are settled. So, that, that, if that happens, that would be a positive.
I completely agree with you in theory, but the government adding another layer, expecting it's going to move faster.
Well, I said if that happens.
If that happens. Yeah, I need to see it to believe it.
Yeah, I need to see it to believe it.
Okay, any more committee meetings? I think we're still on committee meetings. Mr. Masters?
So October 14th, we had the ad hoc committee meeting. Due to the hard work of the committee, we actually proposing three draft ideas. I will read them briefly, but I'm going to ask that these proposals be placed on the district website. So the first one, I think, was what we also discussed at the last meeting. It is a 10, 11, 12 high school, an 8, 9 middle school, a brand-new 6, 7 intermediate school. And then keeping the sister schools as is, but possibly modifying or adding on to the sister schools as needed. Two of the other proposals were removed. We've actually changed one, which is the 10, 11, 12 high school, an 8, 9 middle school, a 5, 6, 7 intermediate school. And then we would make the sister schools K through 2 and then 3, 4, again with possible additions or modifications. And we created a new proposal, which was a keeping the 9th grade in the high school, 9 through 12, adding on to the high school, a 7, 8 middle school, a brand-new 5, 6 intermediate school. And then, again, keeping the sister schools the same with possible additions. Now, the reason why I said these are draft is we're going to have a public meeting on November 13th.
Thank you.
Yes, we finally got to it. It's going to be a collaborative meeting. Dr. Lehman had a really good idea where we're going to actually make it interactive and take feedback from the public, get some more information on what we've proposed, maybe modify and change them, basically making an open meeting. I'm going to ask for these proposals to be placed on the district website immediately so people can consume them and read them and review them. If they have any questions, email the board. I'm also going to ask for some brief summaries to put on there of why we came to these, came up with these ideas. So that's it. I wanted to keep it short. I know I'm the last one.
Questions for Mr. Masters?
I just have a comment.
Okay.
I think it's wonderful. I know I'm on the committee and I see the seriousness that we're all, you know, undertaking here. It's important for the senior communities to get this information. And I'm saying this publicly because I, people that are listening need to speak to their HOAs that are in these communities. A lot of the communities won't allow the Board of Education to give information and send it around to all their residents. They often, usually, they have email blasts that they will send out to all their residents. They won't send information from us out. Not, not all of them, but enough of them that I think that we need to open this up and have some dialogue with the HOAs of some of the, some of these communities. Some of them have newspapers, some of them have articles, and they do submit it. But not all of them. And it's important because we shouldn't leave out any aspect of the community in coming up with new ideas for a possible referendum.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Steve, do you know why it is that they leave out information that affects people's-- I think they equate information with politics. I'm just guessing now. And it's not, it's not. It's information. So, but they won't let, they won't let anything in there.
We could--
It's unfortunate.
We were, we could have put something in the newspapers, but the newspapers are going out before we're able to get the information into the newspaper.
Right, and there's also a charge for that. It's expensive. And they could do this in, through their own internal mechanisms at no cost. And it's a community service. I don't see why they don't do this.
But again, November 13th. Sorry, I want to make sure everybody knows.
13th?
November 13th, yes.
I have a time.
So you picked a weekday? That's what that is, right?
Yes.
I have a question.
Mr. Aminio?
On that note about getting information to the adult communities, why can't we push information out to the HOAs and let them decide if they want to post it or not?
That was one of the suggestions I made.
Yeah, is that what you meant? Okay. Because, yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Let's, let's make sure we actually deliver the information. If they choose not to--
Absolutely. I posed that at the meeting. I know our administrators are going to implement that. But I wanted to say this publicly because I felt it's important for anyone that might be listening or anybody here to know that this is one of the stumbling blocks we're faced with.
Right. The homeowners associations in each community is a governing body for the individual communities. But people sometimes think that they're actually public governing bodies. They are not. They're private. And they do have a right to filter whatever they want, unfortunately, you know, or fortunately, based on, I guess, if you live in there and you don't want any other distractions. But they are private, so they get, they get to choose. But I think we should make our posts available to them.
You can only try.
Yeah.
You can only try.
I know, we have a meeting with the HOA--
That's in December.
In December. So, but by then, we'll have a better, we'll have maybe revised plans that we can then present to them in December.
Well, if we can make it happen sooner so that they can be in that November meeting, I think that would be--
Dr. Alvick, when you say "we," who are we discussing?
Mr. Ryback, Mr. Gorski, Ms. Kalapovich and I went to the last HOA meeting so I could introduce myself to them and make it, have a connection with them.
You mean, the HOA meetings where all of--
For all of the communities. For all of the communities, yes. And then there's another one in December.
Okay. So at this time, we'll go to a public forum. Anyone from the public wishing to speak to the agenda, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. We have our four-minute timeline. When the timer goes off, your turn is over. And you can only come up once tour for each public forum.
Anthony Presiellozow at Equestrian Way. I'm going to speak about Ms. Patty Lang.
Is she on the agenda?
Yes, her name is on the agenda, and I'm speaking to the agenda. And I asked the attorney, if her name is on the agenda, can I speak to it? And she said yes. So if you have any other information, let me know. But info circulating throughout Monroe, Board Member Patty Lang became angry and was yelling at Board Member Michelle Aminio during a BOE meeting and business. Losing her cool with an outburst is not becoming of an elected official. This outburst was common knowledge to the public, yet no mention of this was given from the board president at any public meeting. Why not? If it was Michelle who was the one screaming and yelling, she would be brought up on ethics charges. Also, at the last meeting, Mr. Lou Masters was interviewed during a public meeting, and he lost his cool and exchanged loud words with Board Member Peter Tofano, which was completely unprofessional. On any job interview, he would be disqualified from that job on the spot. The board president did nothing, not even coming to the defense of her colleague. Why? Did you know that no request was sent out to any former BOE member to ask for resumes to compete for the board membership? Also, by losing the last two elections, it shows the public did not want Mr. Masters as a board member. But now he's on the board. That's funny. The board president also did nothing when Mr. Masters addressed the rumor that his wife does not work for the school. That was inaccurate. Did you know his wife was voted on for substitute teacher position for the last three years? But not as Corinne Masters, but as Corinne Lanza. This is a different name from her speaking at several public forums when she called herself Corinne Masters. How deceiving was this to the board members and the public? The board president knew this deception and did nothing. Many of the public know Kathy Kay and Corinne Masters slash Lanza are friends and did not mention this dual name before any vote. With the outburst for Mr. Masters during his interview and his wife using the dual name for a job, Kathy Kay, Patty Lang, who's running for reelection, and several other board members voted to put Mr. Masters on a board as a replacement. And by the way, that vote on the substitute teacher's job down the road may offer health insurance benefits for the Masters at $25,000 a year to the cost of the taxpayer. Another one, let's not forget what happened to the superintendent issue. Dory Alvich lost her assistant superintendent job with a vote from the board, not to renew her contract, but somehow she's now the superintendent making much more money. The board president lost that vote. So what did she do? She stalled in removing Dory, waited months in order for the next election to get two new members, Andy Polari and Rupa Sagal, elected in the hopes of getting her way overturned with votes from the, I'm sorry, elected in the hopes of getting her way to overturn the vote by past members. The public voted those two in, and the public got their reward with cronyism and abuse of power. Dory, in six years, jumped over one super, assistant sup-- excuse me, assistant superintendent and three superintendents to get that job, even after not being renewed as assistant superintendent. How can this happen? All right? In the past, if a board member that Kathy felt was not in agreement with her--
Your time is up.
She would, that's not four minutes?
Yes, it was.
Hi, good evening. Gail DePaine, 356 C Old Nassau--
My question?
I'm not answering your questions. The time is up. It's now Mr. Payne's--
It's not a Q and A.
I know. It's Mr. Payne has the floor.
Again, Gail DePaine, 356 C Old Nassau Road, Rossmore. I wanted to ask Mr. Tofano something, so do I have to ask through the president to you?
Yes.
Can, okay. I just wanted to know, when they mentioned the four new trailers that were coming in and they weren't going to have bathroom facilities and the children can get into the schools, will there be an overhang for bad weather? Because we had that years ago when I lived in North Brunswick and my son was in one of the kids that like run across to the school to get in for any kind, like for a gym or anything else that had to go in the school. Is something in place to protect the children?
Well, there will be. We haven't gotten into the schematic area yet. But when we figure out exactly where we want to place the trailers, we will make sure that the kids are covered when there's snow or ice or rain or something like that.
That's why I wanted to make sure.
Yes, like we did with the middle school.
Right. I mean, your trailers are very nice compared to what we were used to in our town years ago. And that was just my question. I wanted to make sure the kids were protected. And for Dr. Lehman, regarding this new NJSLA, aka Park, I was never in favor of Park when I was on the North Brunswick Board of Education. I wanted to ask, I know Park had an effect on the teacher evaluations according to how their students performed. Am I right? How it was in the beginning? I just want to make sure if I remember it, because it's been a while.
Yes.
Okay. And I know it was very high. It was in the 20-some percent in the beginning and then eventually dropped down to 10 or 12. Am I right there?
It started out as 15%. It went up to 30%. It's now 5%.
Five, okay. Oh, it's still 5%?
Yes.
What, I saw you had the breakout of the special ed children. Are the special ed children still tested with the regular ed children? Are they given a different test?
So they're given modifications for their testing environment based on the modifications they get in the classroom every day. So if they need extended time, they get extended time. They need a small group environment, they get a small group environment. If they need test questions read aloud, they get test questions read aloud. But it's all driven off of their IEP.
Okay. And, but is that included still in your final results, your final data? The test scores with it?
Yes.
So, I mean, that was a problem years ago when I worked for developmental disabilities that the parents were upset with the state because people were blaming the special ed kids not being able to pass those tests and bringing the scores down for all the districts. But I saw from your presentation tonight that that's not happening. And am I correct? It's not happening? It's not bringing your scores down, or is it still bringing your scores down?
Do you mean for the teachers evaluation piece?
Teachers evaluation, and for the district?
For the teacher evaluation piece, it is not based on whether the students pass the test. It's based on student growth.
Okay.
And they're compared to their peers of wherever their peers scored last year, what their growth is.
Right, I saw that, yeah. Okay, because I'm just, my complaint years ago was that if you taught in an urban district, the poor teachers are teaching to 20-some kids and a lot of them were ESL, came in. And I know it happened to my daughter in North Brunswick. She signed them into the computers and they signed themselves out and they said they were done. So that reflected on my daughter years ago with Park, and that's probably why I didn't care for it. My son's a special ed teacher. Same thing. I mean, years ago, special ed was included. And they were tested the same way as the regular ed students. So I'm just glad to hear that that's discontinuing. And the teachers are given a fair chance because you can't include those children in with your final scores. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Pradeep Malam, 4 Jake Place. I have a question about one of the page that is circulated in ad hoc committee meeting. It titled at capacities and enrollments. In that one, there is a projection for high school students for 22 and 23 as 2896, 2,896. According to the last demographic report, the high school students, again, I'm repeating it, demographic report will have two numbers, one lower-end number, one higher-end number. According to his report, the higher-end number itself is 2,747. I would like to know where this 2896 number came in from. That is one question. The second question specifically, I see number of projections for 2026 and 27. In May BOE meeting, I asked specifically, why don't we plan our board to meet the demands beyond five years? Mr. Gorski specifically told, we are not allowed to plan or project anything beyond five years. And that's the state mandated rule. So I would like to know where these 2026 and 27 numbers came in, what report or what demographic we paid to get these numbers. That's all my questions.
Do you have an answer to that?
Yes. First, regarding the comment on the term of the projection being five years. We've reported this many times. The standard from the state is not to allow projections to go beyond five years. That's in line with the long-range facility plan. In Monroe, we have projects already approved on the books that are not planned to begin in five years. So Mr. Teague and I went down to the Department of Education Facilities Department, and we lobbied for a 10-year projection period, and we were successful in doing so. So our projections that we will be submitting to the Department of Education will allow us more room in the construction than a five-year model would.
So where did we get these numbers? This is from your hand?
Where did we get, what numbers?
Where did you get these 26, 27 numbers? Is this from some--
Where are you on the report?
What?
Where are you referencing?
Okay, there is a page, something called, he has a page. You circulated that page in BGNT meeting as well. Mr. Gorski? Okay, the question is, I'm not questioning why you put the numbers. Where, what is the source of this number?
Source of the numbers was a demographic report. It shows--
Which demographic report?
I don't know. I didn't put this together. But it shows enrollment projections through the 22, 23 school year as--
That is from Habers.
2896.
That demographic report, 22, 23, is the demographic, last demographic report that BOE has paid or get from external agency is on September 2018. And I have that report a copy. And that projects the similar number. But you, the number you put in this page is beyond that number. I would like to know, is there any other report that that public don't know?
I'd have to check with the facility director who put this together. I don't know which report he extracted this data from. But it was from probably the most recent demographic report.
Okay. Did you, did you know, when did the most recent demographic report we had?
I don't know if hand. We get updates every year. I don't remember when the last one was issued.
Okay. In the last meeting, when I asked like, why we don't have an every-year demographic report, you guys told me that we have to specially approve the board to pay the demographer. So we are doing on-demand basis, not an every-year basis.
I will tell you that we are in the process now of updating the demographic report. We talked about this at length, too. The most accurate time to begin a demographic report is when you submit a state report called the Application for State School Aid, which counts and categorizes every student in the district as of October 15th. That data is due into the state in December. So as we discussed a few times, we expect the results of that report to be submitted back to the board for review in January. Right, Mr. Polari?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we are in the process of updating it now, and we'll have that finished.
So you don't know where the numbers came in from, but you are circulating to the public. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. Betty Sabarito, 2 Barrymore Drive.
I am the mother of a classified-
Let me, Michael.
I'm the mother of a classified child and I'm the leader of CPAG, which is the Special Education Parent Advisory Group. I wasn't going to come up here and speak today, but I am appalled that somebody just said that if we were including special education students in our numbers, that we would be bringing down the scores of others and that that's not fair to the teachers. I really don't have any other statement other than that because of course we should be including our special education students in everything. We're not bringing anything down, so I just wanted to make that statement.
Prakash Parap, 33, Deanna Drive. First of all, congratulations to our high school, a good middle state, modern, I don't know, middle state credential, whatever it is called. Congratulations. I went to back to school, I have been going to back to high school for last four years, but this year I went and I saw a lot of improvement. The teachers are concentrating how the SAT scores, all other scores will improve for college application, so really, they told that to the parents, which I didn't hear last year, so I feel very good about it. Going to the legislations, yesterday I attended the advocacy team meeting. I think it is time to sue. I think we'll get, hope we'll get some good feedback from the lawyers, because Lakewood and all these guys are suing, and you know the 20 million, whatever they decided, they give them 1.5 million. And we are very, you know, candid, very nice, and we are not getting money from the state. So it is time to kick them. So kick the state, so we have to sue them. Going to the legislations, I know that the bills will come, the language of the bills and the numbers will change, but the philosophy we count on, we should speak about it in Trenton, and our representatives going to the New Jersey Board of Education meetings, we have to spill out and say that we are spending $30 million for our special education, we support it, we have 17% of the students. So I would like to know from Mr. Gorski in next meeting or whatever, the estimated versus census derived numbers for total number of students in the school, special education school, the bill S23219. If that bill is imposed, how much more money we get? You know, I don't want to put that question right now, but estimate, estimated versus census-based calculations of number of students, special education students. If that bill passes, how much money we'll get? So that is the request. We in public, we are going to support all three special education bills, and we'll be talking to legislators to move them. First of all, having the legal, legal case is moving forward faster is better because we are not spending money on the lawyers and all, so it will be good. It is good that they are appointing special judges to, and this bill is moving, I'm seeing that. This bill has passed through the committee, the 3759, and it is moving faster. Somehow they are interested in that bill. And also, for the students, for special education students, for, you know, for 55,000 and more, we spend money, that's good. What, they are looking at the quality of the vendors, and they want to standardize how much we pay to the vendor. So they are making sure, they want to spend money but want to make it efficient for the taxpayers. So we are supporting the special education, we want to support our special education children, but we want to get funds for our schools. So that is, the best thing is, how to lobby is, if some committee, the bill is waiting, we have to call the chair and make sure that bill is discussed in the committee. Otherwise, the bill sits in the committee for five years, nothing moves wrong. Coming to the meeting on November 13 of the ad hoc, we are having a public meeting, but please let us have pros and cons presented to the public right up front. Also, cost with and without modular construction. And also, I request Dr. Alwic that there is a big concern on the ninth grade moving out. So I request, you know, up front, I'm not asking the report today, but it is better to give out some report from Dr. Alwic before the meeting, so it calms down. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening, Ramraghna, 6O in Strife, Monroe. If I can, again, second what Prakash said, you know, we really would like to get Dr. Alwic's feedback on those proposals. We are concerned on what would be the academic impact, impact to the children, particularly taking ninth grade out of high school. So we really value her opinion and would like to see that along with financials and other pieces. And a couple of things, questions I had. One was on the, let me just see here, sorry, the trailers, right? Mr. Tofano spoke about from the buildings and grounds, I guess, I guess we're estimating we need 77 trailers for 2020, and now we have, I guess, prioritize, whatever it is, four trailers, right, for the high school. Now again, as we had discussed a thing at the last meeting, can we explore the alternative of modular construction for high school? I think in some school systems, if you start in spring, probably by summer, you have three, four of those rooms ready versus engaging trailers. I know some of it is being dealt with ad hoc committee, but again, there is a sense of urgency. I don't know how long all those is going to take, but before we make those final decisions or put it through the budget process, let's also look at modular construction and see can we really address the needs for the high school through that method versus high, versus The second is on the bills, appreciate Mr. Plury's readout. Again, I feel that as a township, as a board of education, we need to be vocal on which bills we support or not, right? I understand we can talk to the philosophy of the bills, extract certain things out, but if S3219, if Mr. Gorski presents some of that analysis next meeting or what have you, I think we should expressly support such bills. I think we cannot just be silent, let other towns do the work for us. In fact, we should ask the township administration, mayor and others to also support it, right? Cannot just be the BOE responsibility. And, yeah, and then last, last comment is really appreciate the, all the good scores, the measures, you know, that were displayed at the beginning of the meeting and are getting the accreditation. So again, hats off to everyone here in the room as well as the town administration. I guess the fear that many of us in the public have is that, you know, we are going to lose something that's so good and successful, right, by being, having been myopic for these last few years and have not been successful in moving things, like Mr. Plury talked about the roof in Applecart or these 77 trailers. I think we need to ask our conscience, how did we get to this situation, right? Why are we here? And what is going to happen to our children and the, and the results and so on if we keep on sitting on this and lose another year with no action in terms of funding or referendum or suing the state?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Chrissy Skirby, 21 Preakness Drive. The U.S. is currently suffering from a massive shortage of teachers with a deficit of 307,000 teaching jobs nationwide. Monroe is also facing a crisis with our teachers. If you look on the agenda yet another month and there's another list of teachers resigning from Monroe Township. Most of these teachers are going to other districts that have a much more competitive salary. Now we're hearing that come next year, I think you said, Mr. Rutske, a possible 8% to 10% increase in the teachers' medical benefits. That is an astronomical increase to what they will have to be paying. That is detrimental, that is going to be a huge impact on our teachers' lives. Yet we continue to find the money to fund high, highly-paid administrative jobs. We continue to give administrators raises year after year in their contracts. Yet we can't find a way to retain our teachers. It's unacceptable. We have an overcrowding crisis, we have a teacher crisis. We have teachers that are working 117%. That means they are doing the work of more than one teacher because we can't find teachers to come to Monroe Township to teach. And our teachers are going above and beyond what they should be doing and taking on more roles that they, that they should be doing and focusing on, on what they were first here for. It's not fair to them, it's not fair to our students, it's not fair to this community. You need to find a way to get our teachers' salaries more competitive so that they don't want to leave, so that they want to come here, because it's not happening. And the only people who are going to continue to suffer will be our students. We have a great education system here in Monroe and I want to see it continue. I don't want to continue to come here month after month after month and see resignations of wonderful teachers going to other districts that are paying higher. It's unacceptable. I'd also like to ask about this new policy that's being, first read tonight, the public attendance at school events. It says, "The board may bar the attendance of any person at a school event whose conduct constitutes a disruption." Can you please explain what a disruption means?
That, that wasn't a change from the last policy. That wasn't a new addition to the policy. What was changed in the policy was adding the list that the DIAC, the DEC worked with Mr. Goodall on, on identifying the games of chance.
No, that's not what I'm speaking, this is the public attendance at school events.
I think the only-
Not use of facilities, you're talking about use of facilities.
I'm talking about use of facilities, I don't have it in front of me.
Public attendance policy. It says, "The board may bar the attendance of any person at a school event whose conduct constitutes a disruption." It doesn't explain what a disruption is. I'd like to know what that is, what that means.
Madam?
Yes.
Likewise, I was at the policy committee meeting, I don't remember that being specifically changed, but a disruption taken literally means someone acting unruly, impairing the ability of the program at the school to continue. Perhaps scaring the other participants in the program, not, not listening to warnings to cease the behavior. For something like that, I think the public would agree that you would want the person excluded from the event in the future.
I think that needs more clarification. Why is it the board? If it's a school event, why wouldn't it be the school administrator's responsibility? And how do you police that at an event? How are we policing that? Who's making that call?
We usually have, we usually have security at all of our board meetings who works for the Board of Education, therefore the board is authorizing the security to do their job.
No, that's not what this policy is saying.
I believe that is the policy.
Yeah, this, that actually was not changed from the previous policy, that wasn't changed.
So what is, why is, what was changed?
What was changed was the second section, the sec-, the last sentence of that second paragraph, "Further, the board prohibits wagering or gambling on school premises except for games of chance for the purpose of school fundraising and only as delineated in Board Regulation 7510." So it was that sentence that was added based on the change to the building use, adding that list of games of chance that the PTA, PTO, PTS, PSA could actually have in the school, such as the ice cream bingo. I think it included 50/50s that they were doing if they have the licensing. So that, this policy didn't change except for adding that sentence to match the other policy.
All right, well, as you're considering it, I think that maybe you should, Mrs. Skirby, you should look at that line too to figure out what a disruption means and further clarify that.
Can we take a 10-minute break?
You want to go make a, make a motion?
Well, let, we have to close public forum first. All right, thank you.
Yeah, just to respond about the teachers, I do report out to the Personnel Committee each month, and we do ask any teachers who are leaving the district to do, any, any staff member, I shouldn't just say teachers. There are actually only two teachers on the agenda this evening for resignations. There are paraprofessionals, there are two retirements. One of, I don't want to talk about specific staff members, but I did share with the Policy Committee about why they're leaving, and it wasn't because of a salary in another district that was higher.
Mrs. Skirby, your time is up.
If you talk to the teachers, you look around what's going on, we're losing a lot of teachers to other districts who are paying better.
Thank you.
That's a fact. We pay our teachers very poorly and it's disgusting.
Thank you. Anyone else from public? Seeing none, we'll close public forum, and if would you like to make a motion for a brief recess? Okay, 10 minutes? Is, anybody want to second that? All in favor? Opposed?
I am opposed, we should just get going.
Who seconded?
Okay, at this time, our board will move back into public session, and I just want to make a clarification. A little while ago, Mr. Presioso came up to the Board of Education stating that he has spoken to the board attorney, and the board attorney told him that because Patty Lang's name was on the agenda as a roll call, that he was entitled to speak about her. First of all, that's not true. Our board attorney never spoke to Mr. Presioso. Number two, just because you're on a roll call does not make you a person on the agenda for somebody to speak about. That will never happen again. I will make sure that the next time somebody comes up and does that, that they will be told that that's a disruption to the Board of Education and will not be allowed. So I just wanted to make a clarification because when we find out that something is not true and somebody spends four minutes saying something, it needs to be addressed. So, I apologize for that. At this time, we'll go to our Assistant Superintendent's report, Dr. Lehman.
Thank you. So I'd like to report out on tonight, when I first came on board, one of the first things Dr. Alwic talked about with me is she expressed the need to expand our opportunities for our students through our current partnerships. Specifically, she had a meeting set up with the president of Middlesex County College, Dr. McCormick. So Dr. Cretelli, Dr. Alwic and I, we attended a meeting along with several of President McCormick's staff members, and this was up at MCC. During the meeting, we reviewed the process in which our high school courses are reviewed and approved by MCC for credit. We also reviewed the simplified registration process for our students and our families and a new rate schedule that they were rolling out this year for our MTHS students interested in registering and receiving MCC credit. So currently, we have two courses approved for the 2019 school year. They're college marketing, which is Business 201 at MCC. We have business organization and management, which is Business 101 at MCC. Mr. Maralda reported out, and this was a few days ago, that there were 46 students enrolled and have agreed to pay tuition with MCC and will receive credit upon completion of these courses at our high school. He's today actually updated and said it's definitely more than 46 students, so I'm excited to report that we are taking advantage of that partnership. The opportunity is, it's $125 per course, so whether it's a three-credit or four-credit course, it's only $125. And those of us exploring college can kind of put that in perspective as to how affordable that is for an opportunity to get three or four college credits. So we're going to make that a focus through this year to kind of expand those opportunities as best as possible. And through his department, he has seven additional courses that we will submit through the review, the review process at MCC. We work with their faculty to take a look at our curricula, and then they also take a look at the, the staff members we have and their qualifications to make sure that they would be, you know, equivalent to a teacher and the course would be equivalent to what they would be teaching on campus. Another opportunity he spoke about was, he said there is opportunities for their staff members to actually come onsite at MTHS and teach courses that we don't offer. It would be after-school hours, it would be based on a minimum, minimum enrollment, and again, it would be $125 per student regardless of whether it was a three- or four-credit course. That's something we could definitely explore. The collegiate timelines are definitely different than our timelines, so we would be probably looking, you know, best-case scenario, expanding these maybe next year or something like that, because they're already well into planning for those spring semesters. But certainly, it's something we can dive into and it's very exciting. So we're looking forward to kind of growing those opportunities, specifically with MCC. We do have partnerships with other universities and colleges, but this is something kind of fresh and new and what we began to explore this year already, so.
Thank you, Dr. Lehman. Okay, we will go to the Superintendent's report with Dr. Alwic.
Okay, thank you. On the report this evening, we do have two retirements. I would like to start by first congratulating and thanking Mrs. Bonnie Casaleto for her 13 years of service as a supervisor of science and social studies. I wish her all the best in her retirement. Um, I know that she's going to do great things. She's not stopping education here, she's continuing on. Um, I'd also like to congratulate Mrs. Charlene Albrecht for her 22 years of service in Monroe Township. As a teacher, she was a teacher at Woodland School, I got to work very closely with her there and, uh, and she's also a teacher at the, um, middle school, uh, moved into the middle school. So all the best for her retirement. Today, I had the honor of being invited to the Special Olympics of New Jersey Change the Game Conference with Mrs. Dillon, Mrs. Ruela, Mrs. Hines and many of our students from the Unified Program here at our high school. Our district was invited to attend to share all of our achievements with the Unified Programs and they actually invited our students to come and help register everyone as they were coming in. And myself, Mrs. Dillon and the students sat on a panel where we shared a lot of what we did during, um, and our students even answered questions about how Unified has improved, um, their high school career. They talked about how excited they are to go to their Unified Electives, to their Unified Sports Games, um, to their clubs. Um, and it was great to have the students involved in this as well, to really showcase what we're doing in our district. The students did a wonderful job, um, we really should be proud of everything that they've done. Um, I hope that we're going to have them at a future board meeting to kind of share their experience also. So with that, um, Madam Board President, I would like to recommend that the board approve the attached Personnel Items A through U.
Mr. Pelori, seconded by Mr. Tofano. Are there any comments or questions for Dr. Alvek? Okay, seeing none, we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Ratsky.
Yes.
Mr. Tofano.
Yes.
Mrs. Demeo.
Yes.
Mrs., I'm sorry, Mr. Pelori.
Yes.
Mr. Ryback.
Yes.
Mr. Masters.
Yes.
Mrs. Siegel.
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio.
Yes.
And Mrs. Koloponovich.
Yes.
Madam Board President, Personnel Items A through U has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and it is recommended that the board approve the attached Board Action Items A through N. N as in Nancy.
Motion in a second, please. Mr. Ryback.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Masters. Again, comments or questions? Ms. Arminio?
Yes, on, um, E, the recommendation that the board appoint Dr. Lehman to the district's affirmative action officer, uh, for next year, is that, uh, the job description, does that change salary for Mr. Lehman?
It does not. It is, there's no stipend. I've done it for the last five years.
Okay, just checking. Sorry, Mr. Lehman. Um, also, uh, full effect productions, uh, H, um, that's just, is that for one of our, um, Falcons Nest? Okay, that's fine. And, let's see, I had a couple of questions here. Um, okay, the policy, there is, there is a policy and I think one of our, uh, one of the member of our public was talking about it, was the policy 9160, public attendance at school events. Uh, Dr. Alvek, during the break, uh, mentioned that there is no change in this but for a small, um, a small change. However, since it's in as a first reading and it's in the public eye now, I did want to make a couple of comments, I think that Mrs. Skirby did make. It says, "The board may bar attendance of any person at the school event whose conduct constitutes a disruption." So it is, in this policy 91, uh, 9160, uh, the board taking on that responsibility. And I do agree that that's a vague, um, uh, conduct constitutes a disruption. Um, that's very vague and I think if we're going to have a policy, uh, that we should be very clear so the public can adhere to it. It can't be subjective, it can't be, um, it's something that someone just comes up with. So I have a couple of questions. First of all, I would like to see that we, we have a definition of constituted disruption at least, at least briefly. And two, well, does this mean the full board will vote on what constitutes a disruption? Because it says "the" board. It doesn't say anybody, it shouldn't be unilateral. It would be something that the board comes up as a definition, I would imagine. Um, I'll just throw these out there and then you could either answer them or we can talk about them before the next meeting. Um, again, will it be the unilateral decision of just the president or will it be board members voting on it? And then what we actually mean, um, by constituted disruption? And I understand about safety and I'm all about that safety, but, um, how would that also be executed and enforced? I think we need to have those stipulated in this policy. Um, I know, I, I noticed that we have our security personnel here tonight as well as we've hired extra policemen from our municipal police force. And I just, look, we don't always like what people have to say, but I think it's getting, um, personnel, just make this personal. I just think that we have to be careful about going down the road of being too, um, uh, you know, I don't even know the word because I'm sure if I say a word that sounds harsh, it's going to be wrong. So I just think we have to be very careful how we subject the public, other board members, uh, parents, teachers, uh, to all these very stringent regulations. I mean, we are still living supposedly in a free society. Again, I know that we have to be concerned about certain safety issues and I know that there are people who sometimes, um, you know, we, we're always vulnerable in some shape or form, but I, I don't think we should go down the road where every little thing is considered a disruption because we don't like what somebody has to say or somebody may get a little excited. So, I'd like this policy to be reviewed. I'll make some suggestions in an email for the next week.
We'll bring it back to the Policy Committee.
Please. I think, uh, you know, if we're going to put this out, it's too vague and it's not fair to the public because it could be arbitrary and capricious, not saying that it would be, but it has the potential to be arbitrary and capricious that someone's going to make up, well, in this particular case, I don't like what that parent is saying or what this public is saying or what this board member is saying. I think, uh, we better start being very careful or it looks tyrannical. And I don't want, I don't want to be a part of either a tyrannical community or a tyrannical governing body. Saying we are, I'm just saying it's a, it's a potential to do that.
Mr. Pelori, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I did. Uh, very, a, a procedural question. Uh, if, should, does the Board of Education need to adopt a policy only then the district can implement it? Is there such a thing? The reason I ask is like, for example, unless the township takes, puts an ordinance for a speed limit, unless the speed limit ordinance is accepted and is a law, it cannot be enforced by the police. So I'm trying to understand how that works here.
Yeah. Yes. You're correct.
It does.
Policy has to be adopted by the board to be effective.
Implemented by the district.
Yes.
That's why we have the first and second readings. That's why this is on the first reading so we can maybe go back and sort of revisit and define it.
And revisit it.
And then by the second reading, it either changes or it's adopted that. And then, so that's what I mean. It says the board, so I think we should be responsible for a definition.
Okay, anyone else?
I think I'm done. Okay.
Okay, then we'll have a roll call, Mr. Gorski.
Mrs. Demeo.
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio.
Uh, yes, except for the board policy 1, uh, 9160.
Could you repeat the number, please?
9160.
9160.
Then you vote.
And I vote no on that one.
Very good. Mrs. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Tofano.
Yes.
Mr. Ryback.
Yes.
Mr. Ratsky.
Yes.
Mr. Masters.
Yes.
Mr. Pelori.
Yes.
And Mrs. Koloponovich.
Yes.
Madam Board President, Board Action Items A through N has passed.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report.
So we will go to the Business Administrator's Report. Mr. Gorski.
Thank you, Madam Board President and Dr. Alvek. Um, before I get into my report, I am very pleased to announce that Mrs. Rupa Siegel has a contact that was an anonymous donor last year and gave us $10,000. And I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Siegel because once again, the donor has made a very generous gift to the district and I will allow her to, uh, have the thunder for that.
Thank you, Mr. Gorski. Um, yes, as Mr. Gorski mentioned, um, one of my contacts does want to stay anonymous. He is donating this year $6,000. Um, he would like five $1,000 high school scholarships for students in need and $1,000 toward supplies for teachers in the high school classroom, high school classrooms. So, um, I do want to thank him for his donation again, once again, he's, um, him and his family have been making, doing a lot of good throughout our community and this is just one way he wants to give back. So, um, I do thank him for that.
That's an awesome thing for him to do. That is wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Gorski will take good care of that.
Yes.
This goes right to our need for additional revenue sources and, uh, additional income and it will go to good use, uh, uh, through board resolution. So, um, Madam Board President, I would like to specifically, uh, move, uh, recommend a motion to the board at this time. It is recommended to the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education to accept the anonymous donation of $6,000 with the donor's only restriction to, that it be used for five $1,000 scholarships for need-based children and one $1,000 donation towards the classes that may be in need for the high school.
Motion? Mrs., Mrs. Rup, Mrs. Rupa, Ms. Rupa Siegel and seconded by Mr. Tofano. Um, any comments or questions? Then we'll just-
Just thank you, to the donor.
Yes, so we need a roll call to accept this.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Masters.
Yes.
Mrs. Demeo.
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio.
Yes.
Mrs. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Ryback.
Yes.
Mr. Ratsky.
Yes.
Mr. Pelori.
Yes.
Mr. Tofano.
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponovich.
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Madam Board President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that Board Action Items A through N be approved by consent roll call. So move, second.
Mr. Ryback, Mr. Masters, comments or questions for Mr. Gorski?
Questions?
Mr. Ratsky?
Two questions. First one on letter I, the E-rate funding contract. So, is this, I know we do E-rate funding every year. Is, do we always enter into a contract this where we pay somebody to get us the rebates?
Yes, sir. Every year, we have a E-rate, um, provider who goes out and helps us with the grant application and the solicitation of the district monies. Um, last year, to the best of my recollection, the district netted about $150,000 by applying through E-rate and that's after the payment to the, uh, the entity soliciting the money for us and doing the grant applications and everything else. This is a fantastic program that I don't know why all districts don't apply because it requests through a grant, uh, part of the federal, um, technology infrastructure tax that everybody pays on their, your utility bills. And that money goes into a pot and it's, uh, available through grant. And every year, we benefit to this to the tune of between $100 and $150,000 and it's been growing a little bit.
Sounds like a great resource.
Did you have a second question?
I do have a second question, actually.
Yeah.
Um, actually, this is more towards Dr. Alvek. So letter M for the gaggle student safety?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is the, and I'm adding the two numbers up, it's roughly $6,000. Is that just for the three-month trial period?
Yes.
It is. And then we could extrapolate that out times four for a full year?
Um, yes, I think, and this is also just for the high school and the middle school.
Okay.
So if we expanded it to our elementary schools, it could be more, but we wanted to give it a try to see how it worked.
I think-
That was a recommendation from the administrative team.
Yeah, I mean, in curriculum, we saw the presentation and I think it, it's a great resource and, uh, you know, any, anything we can do to keep our students safe and catch things sooner than later is, uh, money well spent, I just, I did, I wasn't sure about the, the timing. So, basically, it's $24,000 a year.
Uh, I, I'm not sure of what the number was for the whole year.
Give or take. Okay.
You said that's for six months.
Three months.
Mr. Tofano?
On, uh, line A, question, um, number three, I have a question on the last, uh, the last sentence. I need an explanation for that if you don't mind. Bilingual English/Russian psychological evaluations at a rate of $600 per evaluation. One, can you explain what that is? And two, uh, do we bid that out to see if we can get a lower rate?
I could answer the, uh, the latter part, Dr. Alvek.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the, um, this type of contract, according to the procurement laws, is a professional services contract because of the license issued by the state of New Jersey to the psychologist. It's similar to a doctor or an architect and they are exempt from bidding because there's concerns that the district, uh, would want to engage in other than financial and making the contract, such as qualitative. Do they have the necessary experience or, uh, or, um, expertise that you're looking for? So you have some latitude going beyond just the price to award that contract and it's exempt from bidding. We still have to advertise it in the paper once it's awarded, and we do, but it is not required to be bid.
But what, once they're all certified to be a psychologist, don't they meet requirements evenly?
They do, they do, but I, and I'm certain that Mrs. Ruela compares and does a comparative analysis by psychologists to see who's got experience that would better align with what our students' needs are. For example, even though they both have a license from the state, one may only have six months' experience, one may have 10 years, the rate may be the same and this one would be of much greater value to the district.
And I think these are specific to our English-language learner students, so these are students that don't have a lot of English. So in order to get an accurate assessment of them, if we're, if we have concerns, um, we need to have a bilingual person. There's not many people that do that.
Gotcha. Okay.
Ms. Arminio?
Thank you.
No, that's okay, go ahead.
Oh, Mr. Demeo?
Okay, thank you. Um, I just would also like to thank the family of Grace, excuse me if I mispronounce this, Guz. Is that how you pronounce it?
I believe so.
Okay. They gave $600 to Oak Tree Elementary School to honor her in her 90th year of life. She was a rave reader at Oak Tree and that was very generous of them, so thank you to her family.
I thought that was very sweet. Yeah. Ms. Arminio?
I do have a few questions on this. Um, going back to the ONTEC E-rate funding, um, so this is a third-party for-profit, uh, this is not a governmental entity, right? It's a third-party for-profit, um, service?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Okay, don't we have an in-house grant writer?
Yes, we do. But the requirements for this particular grant for E-rate goes beyond the normal scope of a grant writer. This is a specific field that, uh, requires the expertise of specific firms that, that go after and apply for these monies with the federal government.
But it looks like it's an across-the-board, they, they look for things across the board, right? Nothing specific or is there a specific, uh, grants that they're looking for?
It's specific in the areas of, of, uh, technology.
Oh, it's just, it's a tech, okay.
Yes, and they're, and they're, like I said, they're recouping part of a federal tax on, on utilities, um, by the application process.
Okay, and it's, I just, I just thought that, and I don't know what it is in the industry, but maybe you can enlighten me, says the district will pay ONTEC an amount equal to 15% of any funding received. So, whatever we get, they get 15% off the top, and then we get the remainder?
Yes.
Is that an industry standard, or is that...
It is, it is, and it's in line with the few other agencies that would do a similar service.
Okay. Going back to what Mr. Tofano mentioned, so on number four, the evaluation consulting in corporate, who makes these choices? I know you mentioned that it doesn't go out to bid, it's a professional service contract. How do we get information about these people, and then who makes the decision to recommend them to the board?
It's based on the particular child's IEP, Individual Education Plan. It could have specific requirements for these services. So, Mrs. Ruela and/or the child study team would review these requirements within the IEP and recommend a suitable psychologist, in this case, to serve that particular student's needs.
But how do they find them? Is there just like, like a place where you can go and just find all these people that you possibly would review?
I believe there is. I think there's resources provided by the state.
Okay. And I think I have one more. Heartland, is that our food service name? We're talking about a cost of about $4,000, $3,896 for, is this just a software invoice?
It's beyond just software. It facilitates the parents putting electronic monies into students' lunch accounts.
Okay.
And the point-of-sale charges that the students ring up, it's all governed by this particular software.
And this has nothing to do with the food services company, right?
That is, that is correct.
So, this is software on top of it?
Software, yes. And you may recall, a few years ago, we had a different software. The name escapes me, but the payment methods were very disliked by the parents. There's a lot of complaints, people starting writing checks again. So, we switched to this. It was cheaper, better, and the parents' feedback has been very favorable.
Does this cost get paid to buy that, by our enterprise?
It does.
It does? So, this is not really in our budget? We sort of pay for it through the food services?
That is correct.
Okay. And I think that may be, may be it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Mr. Masters?
Just again to draw attention to G., Jill stole my thunder. I just wanted to make sure we recognize these readers. From knowing firsthand at Oak Tree, being a volunteer reader over there, I know some, we've reached out to PTA, the school, and we need readers to the Board of Ed and the administrations. These readers are so dedicated, they put a lot of effort into it. We reach out to them on a day's notice, and they come right down, no complaints, and they love reading to the kids. I just want to make sure we recognize, as we did, the impact that some of these people, well into their years, come down and have a great time with the kids. And all they do is they usually get the antibacterial soap. It's pretty much all you get from it. I have like 30 of them. But again, I just really wanted to draw attention to that. And, back to the Gaggle. So, it's 24K roughly, but what is Gaggle? I don't, I looked at the invoice, but I can't tell what that is.
Yeah, oh, yeah. So, Gaggle is a company that, I'm gonna try and do this, she, normally she comes and does like an hour presentation. So, it's a program that we would institute in our high school and our middle school that monitors all of our student portals, like our student email, our student Office 365 platform, our student Google Classroom, that type of thing. But it's all student, it's all our school license, so it's not anything private, it's not social media. And what they're monitoring for is threats to the students, threats to the school, and that's at the high end, but they also look at if there's an issue happening between students that they can, they identify.
Pornography.
If there is an HIV.
Pornography.
Suicides, pornography, any type of thing like that. Now, they have an algorithm that they are constantly revising that would pick up language. But the benefit of Gaggle is, once their algorithm identifies something, it then goes to their team of trained specialists that are on, that are looking at this 24/7, 365 days a year, and they are looking at it, they've been trained to do this, they're looking at it carefully. And then, the school district decides on a, how we react to it. So, for example, if a student is dropping a lot of language in their emails, we may decide as a district that we'll just have Gaggle send the student an email reminding them that they're on school email, that they need to stop doing it. And maybe they wouldn't notify the school until the third or fourth, you know, second or third offense, however we decide to do it. If it, if it is something that the school, that Gaggle identifies as something that needs attention, we would have identified staff members in our district that would get an email to tell them about it. If it was a threat, an imminent threat, whether to the student, a suicide, you know, a goodbye note or something like that, or a threat to the school, it would immediately cause a phone response, a phone call response, and we would identify who in the district would get those responses based on the school. And we could also look at it that if there was a threat like that, it could also go to the police department. So, we would identify all of those practices within the district of how it's identified. One of the things that they pride themselves on is the algorithm just doesn't identify the word "suicide" or the word "kill myself." They, they also identify nuances in the language so that they can pick up things, and she shared a lot of examples with our curriculum committee and with our administrative team when we brought the person in from Gaggle, on examples that they have picked up to show us that this will work. So, after presenting it to, some members of the board also heard about it at, from West Windsor, Plainsboro, a lot of districts are using it now to help identify this. We brought them into the curriculum committee to share it with the Board of Education, and then I did have them come in and talk to the administrative team. So, we wanted to take a look at this as an administrative team, using, doing the pilot this year to see if this is something that we can, that we would consider using. Is that, explain the answer?
That sounds great, yeah. We use something similar in the business, I think it's called Antigena, but it's a lot more expensive than this. I think it's a great idea. Money well spent.
Anyone else?
I do have a question about that now. So, this is only monitoring school district emails and things like that?
Yes. Gaggle does not get into the personal piece because of privacy issues.
Right, okay.
So, it's only school.
What is their statistics on any false reporting?
Oh, I do not know that. They shared that over the last year, there were 572 lives saved using Gaggle. She, I have, I have information, I can send it to you.
Could you, I would be curious.
Yeah, I could send it to you. She sent a lot of information that, that we've shared and we've looked at, so I can definitely send that to you.
Do you still have that PowerPoint presentation?
I do. I do.
Michelle, are you talking false positives or false negatives, or both?
False negatives, like...
So, it missed?
No, no, no. Well, no, if they, if they say that there's a problem and it's a, it's a false positive.
That's a false positive. If they miss a problem, that's a false.
No, no, yeah, I don't, I certainly, well, that would be a good, that would be good to know also, false positive and a false negative. I...
They should have that, I mean...
Yeah, I think they should be able to provide that, that statistic, because I think we should know that as well.
If it's terrible, yeah, then maybe we don't pay the...
Well, look, I mean, look, I'm all for, again, once again, with safety, but I just, you know, I'm, maybe I'm too old, I'm a child of the 60s and 70s, and I just think that, again, privacy is important and safety of our children is important, and we want to know if there's something going awry. But I also think surveillance and monitoring and things like that, again, my personal situation is, we, again, there's a line that you cross that it becomes a little too freaky for me.
Creepy, yeah, creepy.
And creepy.
I agree.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, then we'll have a roll call, Mr. Gorsky?
Mr. Polari?
Yes.
Mrs. Siegel?
Yes.
Mrs. Dimeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
And Mrs. Koloponovic?
Yes.
Madam Board President, board action items A through N has passed unanimously, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to the board president's report. Next week, the board and the administration will be attending the New Jersey School Board Association Annual Workshop in Atlantic City. And I believe every member of this board will be attending with, I believe Mr. Tofano will not be attending.
Correct.
And Mr. Rutske, will you be attending with Jamesburg?
I will be attending with Jamesburg, and I will be, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm sure we'll see you down there. This four-day workshop features many different courses and professional development opportunities in areas such as strategic planning and mindfulness, two of the 2019-2020 district goals that the board approved at the last meeting. We can take classes in areas such as school climate, Robert's Rules of Order, diversity, safety and security, technology, best practices in education, governance, social media and the board, school law, negotiations, human trafficking, superintendent's search and evaluation, human relations, and many, many others. If you go to the New Jersey School Board Association website and click on the AC Workshop, you will find a list of classes and events that are scheduled for all four days. Some of the classes are mandated by New Jersey School Boards for new board members and for those members who have been re-elected. The workshop gives us an excellent opportunity to interact with board members across the state and compare what we do with others. There's been a lot of talk about spending so much for us to go to this workshop, so the cost to the district for attending the workshop last year was $6,717 for hotel and reimbursements to all who attended. We have badges that get scanned every time we take a class, so you're able to know exactly what we're doing and what classes and what time of day. We all split up and attend different classes so that we can cover quite a few different areas. The New Jersey School Boards offers free lunches to those who attend the workshop, which we take advantage of, and we pay for our own dinners. We carpool to Atlantic City so that not every person attending receives mileage and tolls, and we try to be very cognizant of taxpayer dollars. But we also know that it's just as important for board members to have professional development training as it is for staff and administration. In fact, administration is required to have a certain amount of continuing education credits every three years in order to maintain their license, and this workshop offers that opportunity to them. On an annual basis, New Jersey School Boards offers approximately 80 training and informational programs throughout New Jersey that includes county association programming, meals, facilities, and with no cost to board members. Mrs. Lang is one board member who takes advantage of all these educational opportunities. There's been a lot of chatter that she has cost the district tens of thousands of dollars during her term on the board. Nothing can be further from the truth. In her three years on the board, she has cost the district a total of $669 or $223 a year. She does not seek reimbursement for mileage and tolls, which she is entitled to, and this is true for other board members who attend trainings and also can spend about $200 a year and do not seek reimbursement for their mileage. Costs for board members to attend, to attend the workshop or other trainings during the year is approved on the monthly agendas so that the public knows exactly how much money the district is paying out. And if you go over, back over agendas, you'll be able to figure out yourself how much is being paid out. And for the sake of transparency, there is a line item in the yearly operating budget for training for board members. It has also been a goal, a board goal, to have all members attend an outside training besides the ones at the AC Workshop or by having a New Jersey School Boards rep come to our district. And I would hope that the public would think that this is a good investment in their elected officials with them having to have, or having the opportunity to have training so that they can be better board members. Mr. Gorsky?
Madam, I beg your pardon. I was notified that when I did the roll call, I moved off of Mr. Masters onto the next roll call too quickly, and that he had wished to recuse himself on letter N.
Okay.
So, that's a recusal for the no-cost web trace, web-based training for Mr. Masters on N. He wishes to record in the minutes a vote as recused. Is that correct, Mr. Masters?
That is correct, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry about that, that was...
And I think that's a mandated training?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, at this time, other board of education business, anybody have anything? Mr. Tofano?
I'll let Rupa go first.
Mrs. Siegel?
I just wanted to take a minute to wish Bonnie Casalotto a happy retirement. I've had the opportunity to work with her on the District Wellness Council for many years, where we brought a lot of initiatives and programs to the schools. So, I just want to wish her best of luck on her as she embarks on her next journey and her next chapter.
Thank you. Mr. Tofano?
I just wanted to say, at the last board meeting, we, well, I had bought up a, why the mayor hadn't bought up a moratorium on, in the town for, to stop the building, you know, not a permanent stop, just a pause until the school can catch up and get some classrooms built for the in-house students. I directed my question at the mayor because I didn't know any better, and I was chast, you know, I was scolded for directing the question at the mayor, and I asked why a moratorium wasn't implemented. I was told by the council president that any moratorium would last just as long as the builders hired a lawyer and knocked it down. I then said, well, we have an attorney on in the township, why don't we just keep fighting them in court, and maybe we can get a little distance in time for the building to stop so that we can catch up. I was told that there is no plans for a moratorium, there are, there's never going to be a moratorium, and that basically what the town's doing to try and help us is to buy land so that this way the builders can get their hands on it and build. I did a little research, a lot of that land that they purchase is wetlands, so none of it could be built on anyway. I also, after the, and you can actually watch that on, on the township website, also I asked the council president, and I wasn't on camera when I did ask him, but I asked him after the meeting, about a very dangerous situation we have here at the high school where the rear entrance on Perrinville Road is no left turn into that parking lot. There have been several accidents there because people stopped short to make the left, students stopped short there to make the left, and kids are being rear-ended frequently. I think it's happened three or four times already. And there's also been more than a big amount of potential accidents that happen there. I asked him if we could get some kind of traffic device on the double line at that entrance so that cars couldn't physically make the left there, and he said he would get back to me, and I still haven't got an email from him. So, I just, I wanted to let everyone know that we're not going to get any help from the township as far as stopping the building and stopping the overcapacity issue here. So, unless we sue the township or take further action, we're not going to get it from them. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Polari?
President, I have a couple of items that I would like to talk about. But first is the donor, I really appreciate whoever that is, and if we happen to have an address, just make sure that on behalf of the board and the district, we thank them for that. The one other item is that, you know, one of the lowest-hanging fruits, from my perspective as a private citizen, is we already have the juvenile state boys' center. How quickly can we get into it? So, I did some research on that, and I spoke to a couple of people at the Department of Law and Public Safety, specifically the Juvenile Justice Commission, to see if we can start using that facility, when would it be available hypothetically even to use it. Unfortunately, I don't have a good news on that. Basically, they made the announcement, they're going to build three other facilities, apparently, two in the south and one in the north, and then transfer the people there before they vacate it. And right now, they don't even have the sites for the three of them. So, basically, what I'm reporting back to you is, this is not going to happen the next 10 years or so. So, if there's public who is thinking like I am thinking, then this is not a viable option. The last one is, is something that's near and dear to me, is I don't know what the policy is, but being an engineer, there are a lot of projects that personally I get involved in, whether it's the Second Avenue subway system, raising the Bayonne Bridge and things like that. I'm beginning to get questions from folks who are sophomore and junior in the high school, ask me if I could talk to them about career choices and things like that, and purely based on my personal relationship with their parents. So, what is the board policy of having a school student trip, maybe in a sophomore or junior year, to take them, which I could even have my company sponsor some offsetting cost of it, to, for example, how did we take the Bayonne Bridge and raised it by 62 feet while the traffic is still going? I mean, that could be intriguing to people, that may be a career choice. Is there a program like that that we typically think about? Maybe this is not the right platform to bring it, but I just want to throw it out there.
Well, Dr. Alvik, Dr. Green?
We do have, if a, if any group or class or teacher wants to go on a field trip, they would just go through that process of going for approval, and then the board approves it each month.
So, in other words, if I'm sitting over there and I have an idea of doing that, how would I go about doing it?
I would reach out to the building administration and share the ideas, and they could probably put you in touch with whoever's in charge of that group of students.
Okay.
If there was a club or if there's a class that would be interested in that.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Ms. Arminio?
I've actually had that question asked of me as well, that there are parents in this district, professionals and otherwise, that have actually gone to some of the, the building administrators, and they've not really been given the green light to move forward. So, I think maybe could we have, or again, ask our public, our parent professionals to, maybe we can have a roundtable or like a, like we have the college fair, maybe if the parents come forward and they want to offer some of their expertise and/or get our children involved in their companies, maybe we could have a night like that where parents can come forward, we can probably put an outline in or a list, and, you know, Mr. Polari can start it off, and I'm sure there's, there's many other parents like that.
Sounds like Career Day.
Like a Career Day, but with volunteers. I mean, I've had parents ask that they would like to volunteer and open up some avenues for the children to, so, I mean, that, that's something I would be much, very interested in.
We do a Career Day, don't we?
The middle school does. The middle school does.
And at the elementary schools, too.
But the Career Day with the, with the parents?
The parents, I go in and I talk about IT, and they get real bored because they think I make computer games, but I don't, and then, but we have a nice...
And once you don't make computer games, they're not interested?
When they hear computer programmer, but yeah.
Okay, I'll talk to the parents who've approached me and see, and, you know, try to get a list together, and maybe they just weren't aware of it.
Elementary school is too early, but by the time they get to the sophomore, junior level, they need to make a decision, so I think, and they're a lot more mature by the time about what they want to do, they have some ideas. Basically, they're looking for clarification of which direction.
I disagree with that statement, I don't think it's too early. These kids eat it up, they, they want to know what people are doing and what's out there.
Not all the kids are as smart as your kids.
Actually, I don't have my kids in my classes.
Dr. Alvik, do we offer internships through the high school?
Yes.
For the kids?
Yes.
And how do they go, go to career?
They do it through senior option.
Senior option?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else?
I have something, just quick.
Okay.
Something related to the ad hoc. So one of the other things that the ad hoc brought up early on was reaching out to businesses. So I've started that, we reached out to Amazon, haven't heard anything back yet to see what their donation slash charity is. I know if you read about Bezos, which is the AWS guy, he's not really into that. He does donate, but he, he's not into donations on large scales, but again, we're going to try it anyway, this is one of many, there was a couple proposed. Regarding the Park Two Park, again, as an anti-park parent, it, it pains me, I didn't want to talk about this before and take away from your, your thunder, that once again, we, we had a mandated, you know, Common Core that had come in, we had to spend all this money and all this time, and then it fails, right? If you remember Phonics from years ago, remember that thing that they pushed and all the money that went to that, and that failed, and we went back, and now we're doing Park Two or whatever they're calling it. And again, we're re-gearing, we're retooling, and it's an untried and untested, and again, this is from my, my personal opinion, money mandated program, I'm just one of the, I'm just annoyed at that whole thing. But on a positive note, the marching band and the color guard at JP Stevens, they didn't get first place, it was second place, but hey, they, they tried really hard, they sounded, I thought they sounded great, but I'm not a musician. And again, come out to the home show this weekend, please. I believe it's at?
Five thirty.
High school.
It's at the high school at what?
Five thirty.
Five, thank you. At five thirty? I'll be there all day, I'll probably sell you a hot dog.
Oh.
But, uh, yeah, please come out, thanks, support the band and color guard.
Kathy, before, before we go in...
Friday or Saturday?
Saturday.
Before we go into closed session, there's very few members of the public, those are still here, I appreciate, can we send our police force home?
Can we do that? Should we leave?
I was aware of that, but they're already contracted, so the answer is...
For how long?
Four-hour total block.
How long?
Eleven o'clock.
Police stuff up on the floor. We're not going into closed session. Okay.
Okay, so are, anyone else have other business? If not, we'll go back to public forum. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Prakash Parab, 33 DeNA Drive. I looked at the presentation today with performance of the students. The economically disadvantaged students are doing very bad, okay? They are in twenties, that's continuously trend, I'm seeing. So I think what we have to look at is mentoring. The senior students can mentor outsiders. I think you all do the analysis and advise what way we can elevate that group, okay? So that is a fact, you all can see the table. Another one thing is funding from the corporations. What I envision is, is like a human relations, you have to prepare a package, and you have to look into different corporation and approach them correctly, okay? That is the approach. So look at that, funding from the corporations can be done, but should be a package, a well-prepared package, a human relationship to build up where the package goes appropriately to Amazon or whichever, and that is the approach we have to go. If I'm working, just to my call and say, can I get a grant? It will not go anywhere. The approach coming from the school correctly to the correct person, that is the way to go. Another one thing, we should have Plan B, okay? I know that whenever I talk to the, some people, they don't want to any increase in taxes, so, you know, I'm not that optimistic about the referendum going through next year again, I'll tell you. So we should have Plan B, okay? What is the Plan B should be discussed, okay? So think over it, what should be the Plan B, whether we are going to, if the taxpayers are not ready to pay, then we have to get the state to intervene. The state will come and say, hey, you have overcrowding here, and you better build a school, and they will listen to the public, what they want, they want to have a first-class school or middle one or whatever, we have to go ahead. I tell you, we should have, when you all are going to go and talk about the referendum, that we are going to question, what is the Plan B? Another one thing is, you know, the council knows that we are overcrowded, but how to stop or issuing the new licenses or permits for the new building, you know? So some way they have to think over what is legal, what is not legal, but I, some way we have to send a message, a candid way to the council that, hey, we are over, over capacity here. You cannot, constructions are going on, constructions are going on, where we are going to put these students? This is a problem of the township, and the elections are there next, in November 5th, and better, who are the candidates standing for elections should provide a solution, and we, the public, wants to know the solutions, okay? And lastly, I have another one thing, the ad hoc committee, you know, we received a projections, okay? And those projections from where they came, it is nice to explain where the projections came, okay? There may be new projections from where we got it, so I had a question also on that, so please find out, get the clarity, so we know that, we know where those projections came and who they issued. And lastly, there is a, on page 12, question N, N, you know, N, 29,500, we are giving it to Middlesex County Arts and Education Center, what is this program? You know, page 12, last, last item, N, you know? What is the, I'm not often asking question, what is that program? That is my question.
Yes.
Page 12, I'm supportive of it, just want to know what.
It's a program that's offered to our students, they can apply to be a part of this, it's an arts educational program, and they would go to Middlesex County College, it's something we've offered every year.
Okay, so it is very positive input we got?
It is, yes.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you.
Frank Studo, 225 Fernette Avenue. I just had a question to why me and my family were removed from our seats over here, along with a mother and her daughter with hearing problems.
I have, I...
They said the Board requested us to move.
Mr. Gorski? Because I, I don't know.
I can answer that in general terms. The public seating for the Board meeting is...
There was no seating at the time.
And we have restrictions on where the public may sit. In the past, it has been prohibited for the public to sit behind the Board for security reasons, so if somebody had a hearing impairment, I think you said, they, they could have made arrangements with me ahead of time, and we could have given them priority seating, but that didn't happen, but, but...
It just seems pretty unacceptable.
Security purposes, we don't like people seated behind the Board.
Okay, it's no problem. I, I'm a former student, I'm no threat to anybody here, I don't see why this is a, a rule or why anybody on the Board would feel threatened from the public.
Certainly, I sit next to you at the ad hoc committee meeting, no one took it as a threat, it's just a, a procedure that we implement here for security.
Understood, thank you.
That is very upsetting to hear that that happened this evening, and I want to reiterate things that Ms. Arminio has been saying for quite some time. The public here, we are taxpayers, we are residents, we are part of this community. We deserve to have our time to come up here, voice our concerns, to sit here and feel like we are valued as taxpayers and part of this community, not to be treated poorly. You took a break to call the Board Attorney, Mr. Preziosso did not say he called the Board Attorney, he said he called an attorney. We took a break to call to find out whether he spoke correctly at the first public forum or the second public forum, regardless, he was able to make that statement tonight, whether it took place at nine or 10, he was making the statement. But you felt the need to take a recess and waste all of our time so that you could try to prove a point with the Board Attorney? It's shameful what goes on here. I came here September 24th with my five-year-old son. I did not come up to the podium, I stood in the back, I was very quiet, I didn't make any noise. I got up to leave, and I was stopped by Mr. Rutske, who broke Board policy. You could see on the video, he had his phone out at the Board table, and he was showing it to Mr. Mayo and Ms. Siegel, and he was saying to them, you could hear it right on the video, that Chrissy Skirby is live streaming, to which then, which I was not, to which then he blocked my way leaving the building. I couldn't, I was stopped, I was yelled at, I was yelled at by the Board President, I was shouted at by Ms. Siegel. It was absolutely chaos here, and it was unacceptable. I find it appalling that Board members can just break policy and nothing ever happens, but Mr. Preziosso, you, you stopped the meeting to call the Attorney to find out if he had called. He never said he called the Board Attorney. This Board needs to start acting appropriately and start focusing on what you're here for. You're here to, for educating our kids, you're here to support our teachers, not to constantly attack the public.
Anyone else from the public? There, we will close public forum.
Madam President, I apologize, I had to go to the bathroom for 10 minutes. That's all I'm going to say.
I, I understand, because the, the question was not asked until after we decided to have a, a recess, so it's okay. So at this time, closed session resolution, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subject, harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Following closed section, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Motion, second?
Second.
I need a first. Mr. Mayo, Mr. Ryback, all in favor?
Aye. On opposed? Five minutes?
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
At this time, the Board will go back into public, we're going back into public session, and our next scheduled Board of Education meeting is February, February, wow, November 20th, 2019, 7 o'clock PM at the Monroe Township High School, motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Ms. Arminio?
Mr. Mayo?
Mayo.
That's all right, I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, Ms. Mr. Mayo, Ms. Arminio, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then the meeting is adjourned.